You should do, you should do.
You should do.
All right, good news everybody, it seems like the live stream is fixed, so I'm going to call the meeting back into order and ask the applicant to come up and begin his presentation. Or their presentation.
Okay, thank you all for having us tonight, we appreciate Planning Commission, the staff, and all the community for their input. My name is Sarah Dieringer, I'm the Division President for Cardell Homes. Oops, sorry, thank you. So this is the agenda for the evening, the team that we have with us tonight here, many of whom will be speaking, is Travis Fraser, he's a civil engineer with Redland, Jeff Keely, the development consultant with JMC Consulting, Julie Gammack from THK Associates, our landscape architect, and then Cassie Slade, a traffic engineer, is here as well, from Fox Tuttle. This is the vicinity map, which you've already, you've already seen, the map just shows the general location, it is directly, it's located in the Kings Mill PUD, north of West 88th Avenue, and is directly adjacent to Kings Mill Park to our south. Just as a project overview, a little background information and a reminder to everybody, the Jeffersons County School District decided they needed to sell some of their assets, so they identified Zurgar Elementary School as one of those schools that was needing to be sold. The district began a public process of accepting requests for proposals, and then they asked an advisory committee to vet those proposals, and we were selected ultimately as the best partner for the school district and the community. After being selected, we held a community meeting and attended a pre-application meeting and concept plan review, where we received a lot of feedback, staff indicated to the, to the public that no funds were available to acquire sites for open space or parkland within Westminster, as that was one of the primary concerns. After the meetings, we incorporated comments and feedback from the community and the city council in our land plan. This is a three-step process, and we're here today asking to amend the comprehensive master plan from public, quasi-public to residential low-density. Cardell Homes, we're a family-owned business, operating here locally in Colorado, we've been building homes since 1973, across four regions in North America, in Denver, we've been here for 20 years. Below is a list of examples of communities we've been building in, in the Denver metro area, for the last 20 years, to include Westminster Station, Lyons Ridge, Solterra, Roxborough Park, to name a few. At Cardell, we have a charitable division called the Cardell Foundations, which allows us at Cardell to interact with the neighbors, to enrich their lives and their communities through charitable donations and support. Some past initiatives that we've participated in recently would be, we included, we built an outdoor classroom for the Rooney Ranch Elementary School when we were building at Solterra, and we donated to the Westminster Station Park and Nature Playground while we were building in Westminster Station community. At Cardell, we have in-house architects that design a wide range of floor plans, to include duplexes, townhomes, and single-family homes, and they range in size and price points. This ensures that each home complements its surroundings and meets the needs of a wide range of homeowners, from first-time buyers to growing families to empty nesters. These are just a few samples of the homes that we're building in similar communities, but of course, we'll be working with the city and this surrounding neighborhood to refine the plans and tailor the exteriors to complement the area. And I will now turn it over to Julie, our planner.
Thank you so much, thank you again for having us tonight. So I wanted to talk briefly about the preliminary development plan for Kings Mill PDP. So the PDP originally allowed for a mix of housing types and densities ranging from 4.1 to 20.1 dwelling units per acre. This project is proposing single-family detached within the Kings Mill PUD with a land use type of residential low-density that allows for up to 5 DU per acre per code. We are proposing 4.95 as our mix. The comprehensive plan defines the density and intensity of the differing land use types. The proposed project meets the residential low-density land use type by being single-family detached, being in a suburban area, being informed by the surrounding density, providing one-to-two-story homes, providing accessibility to the parks, and within the allowed density of 5 DU per acre. As Sarah mentioned, we, and within the allowed density of 5 DU per acre. Sarah mentioned we, original land plan when we originally came to the city, which is shown here. This showed 44 lots, there was no connection to Kings Mill Park, but with community and staff input, we made some revisions, which I'll show you in a moment, that included a reduction of 10% of the lots compared to this original plan. That reduction in lots allowed us to protect some of the existing trees on the north part of the site, provide better access to the park and Highline Canal Trail, and maintain a connection from the east side of our property into the existing neighborhood, which was a condition of approval that staff mentioned. So shown here is our revised land plan. Some of the things that we are, wanted to point out is this exceeds the required public land dedication and supports the comprehensive plan goal LU 7.3 by integrating parks and encouraging walkable neighborhoods with access to parks. It also touches on LU 9.2, that the design promotes access to amenities, and LU 9.3 by maintaining and enhancing the public realm. Maintaining an existing access to Kings Mill Park from the east off of West 90th Place, and maintaining the large trees along West 91st Avenue are some of the improvements that we made to this plan. We also provide a connection to the Farmers Highline Canal on the southeast corner of the site, which will be in place for existing and future residents. We believe that this plan meets the comprehensive plan vision and the four cornerstones to provide a balanced mix of housing opportunities and to foster a range of high-quality living options that support the city's active lifestyle. Further, the proposal aligns with the neighborhood unit concept to address changing demographics and housing needs in the area. We believe that this plan meets the city's structure of the suburban fabric, goal HN 3.3.1 through 3.2 by providing a diversity of housing choices, blending the housing types to ensure resilience to demographic changes, and providing a diverse housing opportunities to serve a range of household compositions. This also aids in goal HN-4.2 by providing housing products for downsizing. I apologize. So we wanted to speak briefly about the entitlement and development process. As it's been noted already, we are at the comprehensive master plan amendment stage, that's the only thing we're asking for review on tonight. This, as noted before, changes the high-level use from public, quasi-public to low-density residential.
With the replacement of the water main. Number three, the proposed amendment shall consider the nature and degree of impacts on neighboring lands, individual parcels or groups. And parcels shall not be subject to change in land use in such a way that the new designation is substantially inconsistent with the uses of the surrounding area. Uh, I understand this is a, it's a big change for the area, but what we're asking for is not different from what is surrounding us. It's residential low density on all three sides, and that's what we're asking for tonight. And then we, the additional park dedication to Kings Mill Park. Number four, uh, the proposed amendment is necessary in order to address substantially changed conditions in the immediate area of the subject tract, since the adoption of the land use plan or an error contained in that document. Uh, unfortunately, this is a changed condition. Uh, the school is, is gonna, is closed. And they're not going to open it up again. Um, if we are not successful through this process, the school district will put this back on the market and they will try to sell it. Uh, they have no intention of reopening the school, and it's something they need to get rid of to reinvest back into their school district. Uh, I will note, we were one of three applications at the RFP, uh, level. Um, all three were residential uses and as, uh, Sarah alluded to, we were selected to move forward. Number five, the proposed amendment provides for the orderly physical growth of the city. Uh, th- this is an infill project. Um, it supports orderly growth by facilitating redevelopment for existing parcels. Um, where we classifies in residential low density, uh, ensuring compatibility with our neighbors. And we're optimizing, optimizing the existing infrastructure and services that are already to the site. Um, this is, this creates new homes for infill, uh, infill setting. Um, a lot of the newer homes are on the outskirts of, of town. And so we're taking this opportunity to create new, new, new homes in the infill setting. Number six, the proposed amendment furthers an important public policy, including but not limited to a need for affordable housing, protection of historical resources, preservation of open space, reduction in water demand by virtue of a different land use category. Um, th- this is thoughtful infill development. It contributes to the regional housing problem. Um, it, we're trying to eliminate urban sprawl, so from a, a, uh, from a p- preservation of open space, we're, we're kind of focusing on the redevelopment of our infill site. Utilizing infrastructure that we don't have to extend. Number seven, uh, the proposed amendment is appropriate in order to address a uniqueness in the size, shape and character of the parcel in the relation to the neighborhood lands, neighboring lands. Proof that a small parcel is unsuitable for use as presently designated, or that there have been substantial changes in the media area may justify amendment, subject to evidence furnished by the applicant. It was a district decision, school district decision to, you know, permanently close the site due to persistent under enrollment. Um, there is adequate capacity in the schools nearby. And really, I, I can't really picture this site being anything other than residential low density. Um, I think it fits well with the neighborhood. Uh, the infrastructure's there. And, um, you know, i- it's not suitable for high, high density apartments. So I think it's a very suitable use for this area. Number eight, the proposed amendment would not negatively impact transportation system drainage, water, sewer, infrastructure, water supply, fire, police services, the parks and open space system in the city general fund revenue. Uh, the utilities and services are already to the site. Uh, we will be improving the aging water main on Field Street. Um, our onsite detention will capture the storm water and release at ninety percent of the historical flows. Uh, there's new property tax revenue generated for the city, and there's dedication of new land to extend to the Kings Mill Park. Um, we, we believe this is, you know, sustainable growth and not urban sprawl, which we're trying to get rid of. Never mind, uh, the proposed amendment will not negatively impact referral agencies such as CDOT, local school districts, the Rocky Mountain Metro, Metropolitan Airport and other agencies pertinent to the location and nature of the requested amendment. Uh, said it before, uh, there's no, no airport conflict. We're outside the Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport's high impact zones. Um, utilities are again there. We did talk to the dry utilities, uh, uh, Excel, and they do have capacity to, to service our site. Um, you know, manageable school impact, they have the capacity to, to take our students. And lastly, the proposed amendment established minimal environmental impacts or has sufficiently mitigated any identified impacts. Um, I, I think I'll just talk about the, the plutonium. Um, we tested, we, we were heard that we needed to test the site. Uh, we tested the site and it came back to a suitable place to develop. Um, I want to thank you guys for your time, um, and ask for approval of our complaint amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions of either staff or the applicant? Okay, well, I have a couple here before we, we start here. Uh, uh, there is, there seems to be some concern, uh, at least in the correspondence in our agenda memo packet and our addendum that we received today about the skate park, the park, the connections, and the connections along the east side of, the sidewalk along the east side of the current Zurgar Elementary School property. Are you planning to get rid of any of those? And I guess this is for the applicant. Uh, is your, uh, is, are you planning to get, get rid of any, anything in the existing parkland area and/or uh, and are you planning to keep those existing pedestrian connections?
Uh, as for the, um, parkland that's already existing, we will not be removing anything from that parkland. We're, we're actually adding an acre and a half to that parkland that will eventually be taken over by the city of Westminster. Um, and then the access, I think there was an access right, there was an access to the east side that we, uh, did not include in our first or original land plans that, um, in our newer land plan, we did create that access or keep that access there. And then we have access down to the south, to the High Line Canal, uh, trail that you can access through our walkways, through our site and then into our open space down to the.
So instead of having the existing sidewalk along the, along the east side of the parcel, you're going to have it connect through the public street on, uh, what looks like Everett, if I can squint and read that name.
Yeah, that, yeah, North Everett Street. Um, this is not final, but we'll still go through our technical review. If that's something the city wants to see, I'm sure we can fit it into our plan. Um, I'm not sure if Westminster maintains that walkway through the school site, but, um, in this plan that we're presenting, it would replace that one on the east side and through the neighborhood through our walkway system.
Okay. Uh, and then, uh, and then on the stormwater, we said we're going to detain the ninety percent of the pre-development rates. Uh, I just want to confirm that that's ninety percent. Is that ninety percent of pre-development meeting Zurgar? And, uh, what's, what the Zurgar Elementary School site is doing now, pre-development as in raw land?
I'll pass you off.
Great, thank you.
It's ninety percent of pre-development, so it's in, in raw land. So our detention fund would reduce the flows. Um, basically, if it was all native open space, ninety percent of that.
Okay, great. Uh, thank you. Uh, and then it's, uh, yep, I think those were my questions for now. Uh, Commissioners, do you have anything else before, oh, go ahead, Commissioner Colling.
Thank you very much. Um, I have a question about a comment that was made about the water main improvements. I don't know if this is for, for the applicant or for the staff. Um, can you tell me a little bit about what improvements, um, you're talking about there? I heard something about aging water main on Field Street.
I think it came up in our pre-application meeting, uh, our first submittal, um, comments back from the engineering department that uh, this section of West Ninetieth Place to Everett on Field Street into, I guess, West Ninety First Avenue was, I don't know if it's failing, but it's getting old. Um, so the request to us was that part of our development, we would have to replace that section of the water main.
So this is an improvement that the city is asking the developer to pay?
Correct.
And this is an improvement that, um, will benefit the new development?
And it would benefit a, all the other residents around the area.
Okay, thank you very much.
Commissioner Pegg?
Um, you mentioned that, uh, your internal water improvements will be looped. I'm just not familiar with that term.
I can touch on it, but basically we'll have water, uh, water lines all throughout our, uh, commu- through our neighborhood and we'll connect to the water mains. So it'll go down, you know, West Ninetieth Place to North Everett and through this little loop, which creates.
It creates a loop?
It creates, yeah, it creates a loop, but the, but the pressure remains there to service the.
Sorry, and does it reconnect up at Ninety First Avenue?
Yeah, so it'll collect it Ninety First Avenue all the way down to.
And you mentioned that is, uh, uh, better for resiliency. Can you just briefly explain that?
So we create multiple points of connection so that water can be served from multiple directions. So it helps maintain flows and pressures, especially in like urgency situation if there's a fire. So water can pull from not just one point in the system and if you have a long dead end, if you loop it, water can come from multiple directions.
Ah, so between these two intersections, there's two parallel paths.
So we'll have multiple points of connection to the existing.
Gotcha. Okay, okay. I appreciate that. Thank you. And then, um, uh, I lost track of which slide it was on, but you mentioned, uh, you were tying this to, um, uh, standard number six, about furthering an important public policy. And you mentioned, um, reducing urban sprawl and reducing the loss of open space. Um, could you talk me through how, how you picture that working?
Yeah, so I, I define urban sprawl as going out to the, um, a, a landowner's home outside the city limits, right? Anixing into Westminster to get their services. And then you're, you're developing that, you know, open parcel of land. Um, this is, that, that's the, the way I define urban sprawl. It's, you know, creating new housing from nonexistent services, um, in the area. Does that make sense? And we're taking this infill site that already has services to the site. Um, it's already serviced by, you know, the fire, the, the police. Um, it's already existing and we're just repurposing the use on the site.
Okay, and, uh, just at an eighth grade level, how is that reducing open space loss?
Um, that's a fair point. Yeah, I, I don't think it's reducing open space loss, but it's reducing the urban sprawl. Um, this is not considered open space per se, right?
Yeah, I, I follow how it reduces urban sprawl. I just wanted to, you also mentioned reducing loss of open space. Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Commissioner Mayo?
I heard early on that this was originally zoned at twenty dwelling units per acre.
Uh, I think in the original Kings Mill PUD, they allowed twenty.
Before the school?
Uh, it was part of the overall PUD, so it was a bigger piece of property.
So on the screen is the, the Kings Mill PDP that was original. Um, and the school site is, is, if I can make mouse work, is here, and it was designated as a school site in the original PDP. The surrounding area has a mix of housing types, so single-family, cluster and garden apartments with a mix of densities from four point one to twenty point one. So the, the broader site was all planned and zoned together. It wasn't the school site was done and then the next block was done and then the next block was done. It was envisioned as a larger community.
Okay, thank you.
All right, seeing no more questions at this time, I will hereby open the public testimony for item three A. Um, Madam Secretary, have we received any testimony in the forms of emails or voicemails?
Uh, no voicemails. There were emails that were received and those were sent out to you in the packet addendum, uh, this afternoon. We do have a list of speakers. I'm going to call the first three speakers. If you all will come up to this empty row here. Speaker number one can come to the podium and two and three can be, um, queued up here in the front. When these three have gone, I'll call the next three and we can queue up and kind of keep things going in that orderly fashion, please. First one is Laura Cruz. Karina Tang Walder and Rich Chamberlain.
And while you're coming up to the front, uh, just want to state that first, public testimony is going to be limited to five minutes per speaker, so be ready to have your comments prepared. And also, when possible, if you're, if some, a previous speaker has already um, given something similar, as your comments have been stated, just approach the podium and say you agree with the previous speaker rather than restating the same comments or concerns. Also, please refrain from applauding, groaning, cheering or any, anything else in there. All right, so, and with that, let's, that's our first speaker. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. I really love my neighborhood. I really love the Zurgar area. You can't hear me? Oh, I really love the Zurgar area. I love my home. I'm right across the street from the school. And, um, with this coming in, I wonder one thing. How is the snow removal going to be handled? We do get a lot of snow for these outlets here, this area. And, um, I just wonder why was the difference between Sheridan Green Elementary School, that area being allowed to be torn down and turned into a park versus Zurgar was, um, the school was leased temporarily and with no chance of renewal and then closed and, um, sold. And it, I read that it was stated that it was for the improvement of the community in Sheridan Green. Why are we not allowed that improvement in our community? And I also want to state that, uh, this open space, you know, we have a lot of people that come bike riding through, in our neighborhood a lot on the weekends. And their main goal is like to go ride around Stanley Lake. There's a lot of people that do that. And that's going to all change, it kind of sounds like. Our wildlife is going to change. And just having that openness of being able to walk over to Stanley Lake, to have that big park, I, there's a lot of people that use that park. And we love our park. And you're taking that away from our neighborhood. You're taking that away from us and people need some outlet. They need to not have to be looking at houses around us all the time. You know, that, that's how we survive, you know? We, a lot of us, there are families in the, in this community that may be working two jobs. And maybe their, um, peace of mind is to be able to go to, to the park, to run their dogs, to be able to walk over to Stanley Lake, ride their bike. I, you know, there are three new babies at the end of my street that have just moved in within the past six months. And when the, with the announcement of possible rates going down on interest rates, I've seen six houses go up for sale in the area. Are you going to guarantee that those aren't going to be new families coming in with, with little children that are going to need a place to go to school? Uh, you know, I, I guess I'm just, I don't want, I don't want this change. I really don't. I love the peace in the neighborhood and as a hardworking person contributing to the community, I like my mental break, you know? I like that peace of mind for a few minutes every day and not having cars rushing around. You know, it's like Field Street turned into whatever, what does it turn into Ninety Second? That kind of goes around. Um, that sometimes becomes a raceway. You know, and there's a lot, there's a lot of racing that goes on now and then. And so, you know, I'd, I guess I just, I'm, I'm really not for this. And you said, how big are these lots? Each lot for these houses? You know, nobody said that. My lot is nine thousand square feet. I want to know what are the sizes of the lots of each of these homes? So, I guess I'm running out of time, but I've pretty much spoken and said what I'd like to say. And thank you for hearing me tonight. I appreciate it.
Great, thank you. Uh, next speaker? And, uh, please state your name for the record when you start your testimony.
Okay. Um, my name is Karina Taugwalder. Um, thank you, uh, to the planning committee for hearing, for hearing me tonight. Um, I, I am a longtime Westminster, Westminster resident who lives near the former, uh, Zurgar Elementary School. And I would like to keep that, that school building. And I will explain a little bit later, um, how we can preserve that building. Also, I'm not for this, uh, development of the, of the housing. Because Westminster's, um, Westminster City already has a, a old, um, water and wastewater infrastruc- infrastructure um, due to the old age. It's nearly fifty years old and having a lot of these, um, new houses developed um, will put a strain on, uh, this infrastructure. Also, there will be a lot of cost involved with this. Um, my, uh, biggest concern is, uh, in the past, um, the mortgage rates were lower. Um, and now they're higher and recent trends reveal that, that the, uh, listing, um, the listings of houses rise, but not the closings. The inventory is increasing, but the homes are sitting unsold. And, um, at the same time, there is this national trade issue such as the recently imposed higher tariffs, which have affected now the local development areas. Um, especially in construction. The construction materials have become very, um, high in cost to build new homes. So my fear is that, um, the construction will start and then, um, we, we're going to be left with, uh, a lot of homes or unfinished homes and, um, the park is going to be, uh, all the stock, uh, not there anymore. Um, and that would not add to our community, um, where we enjoy the park, the space, the nature. And also, um, I, the area of these, um, new homes are, um, that are wanting to be planned are very, the, the, the area is very small. And it would further decrease the park's pay, place and the playground for kids. Um, so going back to why I want to keep this, a building of the old elementary school um, is to why not rethink this area instead of having new, um, housing development? Why not turn this into, um, this building, the Zurgar building into, uh, for example, a library? And, um, I submitted, uh, a testimony in writing, uh, to you all in an email, uh, yesterday, but I also attached a, a case study of why a library is beneficial. And, uh, so it could be also turned into, um, not only a library, but it can be a tutoring place for teens, um, the elderly, uh, the, the kids in the neighborhood. This is, would be all at a walking, uh, distance from the neighborhoods. Um, and, uh, so traffic would also, um, not increase. So with this, um, being said, um, I would like the planning committee to not consider this housing development and rethink this area to be, um, to keep the Zurgar Elementary Building, turn it into something more viable so that neighbors can connect with one another and, uh, not have more housing that increases more traffic, air pollution and a strain on our, uh, current water and wastewater infrastructure. Thank you so much. I still have some time left, but that's what I wanted to say and I appreciate it.
Great, thank you.
Good evening. Uh, thank you for allowing, uh, residents to, to comment on, on this development. My name is Rich Chamberlain. Um, I've, uh, uh, lived in, uh, Kings Mill for more than, well, for about forty years, give or take. I can never remember. My wife will tell me. Um, but, uh, we've raised, uh, three children. Uh, and, uh, Zurgar is virtually in my backyard. They all three went to Zurgar. They are now raising families of their own. Uh, and each one of them, uh, has had, uh, s- some kind of issue in finding housing in Westminster. Uh, luckily, one of them is able to live in Westminster and they all wanted to be close. Um, we also had, uh, uh, some friends, a young, growing family uh, who had outgrown the apartment that they were in. Uh, they wanted to live in Westminster. They could not find a place to live. They're now in Deer Trail. Uh, we need housing. We need homes for people. And, uh, my, my suggestion, uh, is to make the zoning flexible enough to add the, the missing middle, uh, to the, uh, to, to the potential market uh, for this, uh, for, for this project. And by that, uh, you know, some, uh, in addition to single-family homes, uh, some, uh, some, some smaller townhomes, uh, some, uh, duplexes that are consistent with the design of the, the single-family homes as well. Um, so my, my suggestion, uh, and some of, some of my neighbors who don't like this, uh, project probably will disagree with me uh, is, is to, uh, uh, allow a little more flexibility in how we zone the, this project. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, who are our next speakers?
Next up is Laura Minow, Phil Flynn and John Fry.
My name is Lauren Minow. I wasn't planning on speaking and just because I got an A in that class doesn't mean I like to do it, so I'm going to keep this quick. Um, my heart is pounding. Bear with me.
Just breathe, it's good.
I have lived in this area for most of my life. My family moved in, I think in nineteen eighty or eighty-one. Um, my mom still lives in the same house on Garrison Street. And, um, I live closer to the Yaknety, so I'm still in the neighborhood. Um, just love it. And I'm just, I don't know, they've presented some good ideas, some things I hadn't considered, but I'm also not really for this. I mean, it, I went to Zurgar. Um, I went to their closing ceremonies. That was a huge bummer, but it was really cool to walk through there and go, boy, the gym was way bigger when I was eight years old. Um, overall, I'm just not for this. I, I don't like it. I just feel like it's such a small space. That seems like a lot of houses. Are they going to be super tiny? That's, that's kind of what I'm, somebody actually posed that question. Are they going to be very small? Um, I'm bummed that we're going to lose that sidewalk on the east side of the property. I run on that sidewalk all the time, up and down. Um, nice that they're expanding Kings Mill Park though. I didn't like that. I didn't know that was a thing. But, um, overall, I agree with everybody, what everybody else has said. I've enjoyed my time in this neighborhood. I plan on staying in this neighborhood for a very long time. I love it. Um, it's very well established and this new neighborhood going in and all the construction traffic and it's just right in the center of the neighborhood and it's just, it's going to be disturbing to the community. That's, it's going to get loud, it's going to get more traffic and. That's, it's gonna get loud, it's gonna get more traffic, and, uh, my mom and myself are both against it, so... That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next speaker, please.
Yeah, hi. My name's Phil Flynn. Uh, I live on Ninety-third Avenue, just, uh, just west of Stanley Lake. We've been there forty years, and, uh, traffic on Ninety-third is at least ten times what it was when I moved in it in nineteen ninety. It's a shortcut coming from the west, coming through, the, the traffic is just, uh, insane. When I moved in, the majority of the houses, I live in a seventeen-hundred-square-foot home. The majority of the houses had, uh, had grass. They don't have any grass anymore. We're constantly being told we need to cut back on water, but we're gonna build more homes. At least ten to twenty percent of the homes that are on Ninety-third Avenue, uh, you know, uh, the last, one of the last speakers just said there aren't homes available. There's homes available, but, uh, uh, the rental companies come in, buy up the property. There's quite a few, at least four, within my block that are for rent. Those people next to us, they stay a year, they stay two years. They pay three thousand dollars a month rent. They move through constantly. They don't bother watering. They don't bother, the trees die, the grass dies, but we need more homes. I think the homes are there. I think they're available. One of the questions I would have for all of you is, um, I'm not, I'm not trying to be mean here, but do you guys take the money from, campaign donations from the developers? Anybody here raise their hand if they take money from the developers? You don't? That's good? Yeah. Uh, the, the other thing, um, I spend a lot of time on the walkway next to the drainage ditch as well. And I see a lot of animals on, on that site. I see fox, coyotes at times. I worked up at Rocky Flats, and one of my jobs was to, uh, put areas in for pebble mouse. I have seen pebble mouse in that area along the drainage ditch. I'm wondering how much of an environmental statement has really been, I mean, you've checked the soil, you've checked the area. What about the wildlife in the area? I've seen pebble mouse in the area, not specifically on that one. And I understand that's an endangered species because I worked at Rocky Flats in order to, to try to, uh, try to get a habitat for them. I'm not sure jumping, uh, putting more homes in when there's plenty of homes if we could keep the developers out. Thank you all.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Um, is, is it okay if I back these slides up to the aerial view slide that we had earlier?
Mr. Byref, can you, uh?
I think it's helpful for just visualization purposes for my point. There we go. Well, first and foremost, I, I do agree with, um, the point earlier that was made that this would take away a resource from the existing community members. Um, I live at Ninety-first Place, so just across the street from this school here. I see young children using the playground equipment that, uh, was next to the school. I see dog owners in the area using this wide-open space that, uh, for their dogs, so it's a disservice to the dog owners if we take this away. I also see families using this for, uh, large event gatherings, so that's a disservice to those families that use this for that, that purpose there. So, that's just three groups that it would be a disservice to. Now, let's look at this red, um, circle here. If we just, you know, imagine that this is that dark gray of all these houses, all right there, if we take that all away, we've got much more density here. I came from Chicago in twenty eighteen and moved out here to Westminster for more space, for more openness, and I love this area because of it. I've seen what happens to communities when you take away immediate park access. Now, I know there is a park over here just south and probably a little more east, but that adds about double the walk for me to get there. And I can tell you, when people don't have access immediately outside of their door, uh, it tends to degrade the neighborhood, not only just the social fabric of that neighborhood, but it also degrades the pricing. The gentleman earlier claims that, um, new developments increase housing prices. Um, I didn't hear a whole lot of backup behind that statistic, but I went ahead and looked at some, some research. The University of Washington did a research study on this. When you take away open space immediately adjacent to homes, um, they said on average, values declined up to twenty percent. So, that's a real monetary impact to all of us, and that's not me saying that. That's the University of Washington that conducted a study, okay? Um, there's also additional studies that were peer-reviewed by John Crompton and Sarah Nichols. They peer-reviewed thirty-three studies, and they also agreed that, um, homes next to a park could even, uh, command a premium of up to about eight to ten percent. So, I know that number's different, but it does show that homes that have access to these exact areas that we're talking about tonight, um, it's a benefit to us. We want that. So, um, those are two points that I wanted to make. I really like this open space. I see it being used a lot by a lot of different groups of people. I talked to my neighbors. Um, I see a lot of them here tonight. I see a lot of them opposed to it. I have, I have one positive conversation about this with my neighbors, so I know that that sentiment runs strong, um, throughout the neighborhood. I know you received a lot of emails. I'm asking you, not as a citizen of Westminster and Jefferson County, to you as a vice chair, to you as part of the planning commission, I'm asking you as a human being to a human being to not take this resource away from us. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next.
Last two speakers are Gary Bland and Jennifer Yanner. I'm so sorry. Okay, okay. Sure. Uh, Gary, if you want to come on up, and the other three would like to speak, if you want to just go ahead and queue up here, that'd be great.
Go ahead, start it up.
I'm sorry, just one second, uh, Gary.
Yes.
All right, sorry about that. Uh, go ahead, Mr. Bland.
Okay, can we reset that? I mean, you took away at least twenty seconds away from me.
Oh, no, oh, yeah, yeah. We'll, we'll give you the, we'll give you the full thing.
Okay, we'll just carry on because I'm gonna go ahead and get started here.
Yeah, go ahead, please.
Um, first off, um, I've lived in, across the street from Zerger, my kids went there, but I actually have the maps here. I want to sit there and go over, um, how they pulled that up to five, uh, ADUs. It's not true. What they did is they went ahead and added, across the High Line Canal, they actually added some, uh, townhomes. That's how they got this number to come up. My calculations, based on these, I'm gonna go over them real quick. There's Block A, one, A, B, C, and D. There's four divisions here. So, what I'm coming up with is if I use just these four that actually apply to the city code and the twenty forty comp plan, I come up with a four-point-three-one. Just so you know, I want to get that clear. They're saying five. It's not possible, not with what I see in the zoning and what's been approved on a twenty forty comp plan. So, what I want to do is I want to go back to, we've had a number of meetings, actually, uh, Jeff mentioned that. Jeff knows me very well. I've sent certified letters. I sent out a survey to, I've got four hundred and ninety people that took my survey in the city of Westminster in this particular neighborhood. I have, and I've sent it to him. You could ask him, that I have actually about ninety percent of these people in the opposition of no. Just so you know, I've had some requests, what do we need to do with the building? We have time to do that. If you deny this property, I've talked to the police, I've talked to the SWAT team, they want the place. We had Dorrell in there. They actually moved over to Church Ranch. They put up a new building over there. That cost them thirteen million. I've talked to people in Dorrell. They made a mistake. They wish they would have never left Zerger. Okay, they had a problem there. They're in financial problems, too. So, now what I want to do is go to the presentation. He talked about, we went there. This all, he, he's worried about the plutonium. I could tell you, I've been there. I was there, and I actually got a settlement, so I know there's plutonium. He cares about me, and I appreciate that. These low numbers, I still got Rocky Flats there, just so you know. So, what I want to do is go over this meeting that he had, this presentation, the same thing. If we go with those forty homes are expecting, I have a copy of the contract that actually came through, um, with the Jefferson County. They're offering one-point-eight million dollars for forty-three thousand square feet and eight acres of land. That's ludicrous. If they decrease that number down to twenty-eight, I've read their contract, it comes out to about a million-two-sixty. I could almost sell my house and move there, and then I'd put my motorhome in the driveway over there, but I just couldn't dump it. This is a ludicrous number. Now, I want to get into, I actually met with the assistant CEO of Jefferson County. I went into that building. I saw it. It's in perfect working order. There is some asbestos in there. I looked at it. They're sitting there saying, Jefferson County mentioned to me, I still got time. Jefferson County mentioned to me that if you guys decline this, and if it goes back out on the resale market, since everybody knows about that low price, they're gonna get a lower offer. So, let's just put it this way. Because if we decline this, and the first off, you're gonna hear a lot more people talking about why we don't need this. I've been there forty-five years. So, what I'm getting at is, that school, my kids went there, that, that building is in good shape. I want time to find, the SWAT, the SWAT team wants to, to have it. I could find the library. We can find use for that building, just so you know. That cost the city of Westminster needs to look at the acquisition. If that's the case, they already gave them Sheridan Greens. I think this is something that the city needs to look at. I know that Jefferson County, they don't stop taking my tax dollars. They still get money for those schools, and I don't get a school. That's not fair to me. And if we sit there and look at, and I'm gonna tell you how many homes are gonna go in this lot. They're talking about forty. They are at, at eight-hundred-thousand dollars, okay? That's a high number. The missing middle misses it by a mile. Just so you know, that's what was in their presentation. I have, if you want, I'll send you the YouTube video. I've been there. I've been to this meeting. I sit there and I work with Bill Christopher. All this development, there's fifty-three developments active in the city right now. He can sit there, this, the, the development process, they're gonna sit there and we'd say we have water. We got the Uplands, we got all these fifty, fifty-three developments. There's six thousand five hundred people being added to this water system. That's what I want you to pay attention to. This development is outrageous. So, what, we haven't even got to Uplands yet. I still get some more time.
You, they reset it to five minutes, Gary.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Sally Byers. Um, I am originally from the south side of Chicago. I moved to Colorado in nineteen eighty when things were open and clear. My husband has grown up in Boulder. His daughters went to Zerger Elementary. He has lived in this neighborhood for more than forty years. We have an older community. I know Westminster is growing. Um, I know there's houses to the north, to the east. But one of my questions about this development is, how are you going to mitigate the asbestos in this building? This building is old. I worked at Rocky Flats. I don't want that building destroyed and all of those partners going out to the community. I don't want to die from cancer. I live on Ninety-second Avenue. And I don't want my neighbors dying of cancer. How are you gonna mitigate that? Also, the noise. I have a relative that has seizures, and she lives just a few houses away from me. Noise like that triggers her headaches and makes her have a seizure. She has grand mal seizures. The noise in this community will be destructive to this poor person's health. Um, there's so much about this area. Yes, we're an older area. The prices are gonna go up, our taxes are going up. And to be honest with you, where's Jefferson County today? Why aren't they here? They're the ones selling this property. Why aren't they here? And these are mostly elderly people. I'm sixty-eight years old. I'm going on retirement. Taxes are going up. How do I afford that on a, on a fixed income? You know, there's so many things that we can do with this area, and really, I agree with the gentleman who said there's a lot of renters. We have a rental house down the street from us that just had two dead bodies in it because the person running that had construction guys in there, and they don't, they didn't keep up the property, and they were doing drugs. We just had a, they just moved out a month ago. Really, when, when we call the city and ask for help on these things, nothing happens. We get a voice recording. We need to pay attention to the older community as much as we pay attention to these newer homes and newer communities going in here. Our older people deserve the right to be in their homes until they die. You know, I mean, I grew up in a city that the houses, I could have touched the house next door to me. How are you gonna mitigate if a fire starts in there? What happened with Marshall? How fast do fires travel through our neighborhood? I mean, these are things we have to think about. Yes, we need, like, you know, people moving into our neighborhood. There are so many houses up for sale in our neighborhood. It isn't even funny. But the rundown houses are the ones that bring down our community, and how many rentals are these houses gonna be? Who's gonna move in there? That's what we have to look at. We have to look at our entire city, not just certain sections. Water, wastewater, everything is important to our vital being. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, thanks for allowing us to speak on this. My name's Jonna Phillips. I and my family live in the home directly behind, uh, Zerger Elementary, along the fences. There's the corner house, and then ours on the, um, the cul-de-sac there. And, um, I want to state that we and everybody in that whole cul-de-sac are opposed to this. Specifically, the removal of that sidewalk from, uh, Ninety-first up to the trail. My main concern is that access for my son, he is an autistic boy, and he loves that access. He doesn't have to have any supervision, going all the way around to the top portion of the entrance of the park. He can go directly, um, by the fence. And then our neighbors to the right are very elderly, seventy-eight, eighty, and a hundred and two. One of them uses that sidewalk every single day, sometimes multiple times a day, to get his exercise, and he's, um, that's part of his, his routine. Um, and this will significantly disrupt not only our community, but my direct neighbors. Um, so I wanted to say how vehemently opposed the majority of the neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one note. I'm not very good at public speaking, so I'm gonna bring up Nick.
No problem.
Hi, everyone. Um, I live just a couple hundred feet away from Zerger Elementary School. I moved here three years ago. I have a three-year-old daughter. I would love to be able to walk my daughter to school, or for my wife to walk her daughter to school. The next nearest school is like thirty minutes away walk. That's not very feasible for a walkable city and neighborhood. Um, especially if I want my daughter to have any independence as she grows older. Walking to school would be really lovely. It's a luxury that I had afforded me, and I think it's something that there are, the residents of this neighborhood can afford as well, or even deserve, especially given that we already have this school here. I have concerns with how this affects the character of our neighborhoods. I do think that reducing the size of the, this yard that sits adjacent to the park will affect how we interact with the park and how we view the park. It'll be a lot more condensed and crowded feeling. And I also have concerns for, I do, I do really appreciate the addition of the- Um, and I also have concerns for, I do, I do really appreciate the addition of the park dedication. I think that's really nice and, uh, but, um, like, missing that east sidewalk that goes toward to, to the park will be a great loss in my opinion. I think it's going to be a very different character walking up to the park. I walk from, um, what is that street, is it Field Street? North of Ninety-first Ave, right north of Zerger Elementary. And, uh, just walk right along that walkway into the park. And I just think it's going to be a very different character to walk through this neighborhood that's rather dense. Um, walk through their, their public road. It's, it's just going to feel so sequestered off from the rest of the neighborhood, I think. Maybe that'll go away with time, maybe it won't, but trying to access the park through their different density housing is just going to feel a little invasive, I think. And, uh, reducing that yard that we can all just play in and throw frisbee and play with our dogs and let my little girl run like crazy is, uh, is a great loss, so. Um, and then furthermore with the park, I do worry how having homes so close to the skate park and tennis court is going to affect the long-term viability of the park. Like, are we going to get complaints about, you know, that the skate park and, and tennis courts available there? Are we next going to be looking at, you know, the eradication of those elements of the park? I know that the developers don't have any say in that, that is with, I don't know if it's with the planning commission or who it's with, but I just worry that's going to be the next step, so. Um, I'll check my notes for a second. Oh, yeah, and, uh, earlier someone was commenting about other, you know, other uses for this area. I would, I would also really appreciate for something besides just more housing. I kind of fear that more housing, this more density actually increases risk to safety of our neighborhood. And, um, I'd like to propose something that has more public use, not private use. Uh, I don't know, like, a shared marketplace, um, a library, um, some sort of other public facility, even if it's not applicable to me, is just going to have a different feel than having this rather dense collection of houses. Um, so I'd like for the planning commission to consider that and consider rejecting this development. I think that's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, my name is Kent McBride. I live in the cul-de-sac on Estes, ninety-sixty-four Estes. And I agree with the previous speaker who said there's nobody on our block that wants that. And we don't back up to the, the school. I can see the school from my front porch. We're, we're at the top of the cul-de-sac. But like the neighbors two houses over who are a hundred and two, ninety-eight, whatever, and has Parkinson's, they use that area all the time. My wife has Alzheimer's. So that's, the school is a, is a landmark for her to go be able to walk. I have two bad knees, so I'm not walking a lot right now. But to me, I'd like you to consider, this is, this doesn't fit in the neighborhood for me. And I know the school district has to do something with it, uh, but I don't think this is the right thing. And if it turns out that this is the best we can do, uh, and you've heard a ton of reasons why, and I don't know anybody who, in our neighborhood who agrees we should do this, then I think we should do something different. Now, I have a unique proposal that I'm sitting in the back going, Cardell Homes, you have this wonderful charity foundation. Why don't you buy the property and turn it into a park? The King's Mill Cardell Homes Park. You would do a lot of good PR stuff. Just a thought. But I don't know, never read the, the planning commission rules. Wrote one down, I thought it was pretty good. It says, um, rule number, or, uh, objective number one. To advance accessibility to opportunity and prosperity for all in Westminster. So my question is, how does this affect my prosperity? Looks to me like the only people that make money and become more prosperous from developing this is the developer. I don't see anybody else in the neighborhood going to make money. I think if you're on that fence, I think that's a beauty, you got some view there looking out over Zerger to the mountains. I don't see how the price of that house is going to keep increasing because you have less of a mountain view. Just something to consider. But I can tell you from everyone I've talked to, answer is no. We can do better than this. I don't know what that is, except suggesting it turns into a park and Cardell becomes a hero. But other than that, I think we can do better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim Fenimore. Uh, good evening, board, staff. Glad to be here again tonight and visit with you guys. Um, I've got some concerns. I was sitting here, didn't really have an agenda before I got here. Uh, took notes of what's been said so far, as far as the presentation uh, from the city and from the potential property buyers that want to develop this and the community. I was keeping record here for everybody that's been up here. Uh, there was one community person that was against it. It looks like there was ten or eleven in favor of keeping it as is, not, uh, building it out. So it sounds like it's a pretty strong community input as far as the neighbors are against this development. Now then, uh, I personally have been in construction all my life. Uh, my grandfather was a mason contractor, my dad and my uncle. I know what, I've made money. I stand here because of construction and farming. So I know that this part of the county and the city has been built out for forty-plus years. I used to ride my motorcycle there when I was eleven years old. Trust me, hurt my feelings when I couldn't ride my dirt bike down there, they started building houses. So this has been a established neighborhood for, like I say, over forty years. So we're trying to change the comp plan and make it more dense. That area, when I do drive over there, I do have a friend that lives in that community. And I go by there, I see the kids out there, the moms, the dads, the grandparents, uh, walking, riding their bicycles, playing bicycles, or, uh, playing basketball, uh, in the skate park, uh, walking their dogs. It, this is a well-utilized property within this community. So, uh, it's not just sitting there dormant and not being used. It's a very high-valued piece of property. Uh, as far as the students, that was mentioned by the developer, that are saying that, uh, having less students there, they get less education. Uh, I, I call hogwash on that. When you have more teachers and lower students, the students get better education. They are able to get the time of the teacher, the teacher can focus on them, so. Uh, less students per teacher, better education. That's a fact. Uh, the city is pushing affordable housing. Uh, eight hundred plus thousand dollars on these homes is not affordable housing. I know that, uh, councils pushes that, I hear it, I, I come to council meetings constantly and try to represent the community. Uh, I've got nothing to lose, nothing to gain on a lot of this stuff. Not getting that ten cents, it actually costs me money and my time to come into these meetings. Now then, uh, urban sprawl was brought up. The city only has two percent left in the, in the city to develop. Last night, uh, council voted to go ahead and change the zoning on, for the seventy-four acres or the senior citizen over on Westminster Boulevard. Take that seventy-four acres out, you're going to have less than two percent of developable land in the, in the state of Westminster. There's going to be a higher impact on the sewer, higher impact on the water. So with all these things that have been brought up tonight, uh, I would recommend that the board not approve this project. And also, I met with Jefferson County School District and toured that property and seen the condition of it. And, uh, I asked this, the city of, or, school official, I'd like to make an offer on the property because I do have an investor that's interested in buying that property and leaving the zoning as is and leaving the open area as is. And they said that we couldn't make an offer on it because there was a contract on it. So there are other options. I do have someone that is interested in purchasing that property as is. And if we're not going to hurt the feelings of the community, we're going to benefit the community. Thank you very much for your time.
Great, thank you. All right. All right, uh, we are going to take a five-minute break here. Uh, there needs to be a technical reset and then we will continue with the hearing, just a second, please. Five minutes, is that okay?
If you all need a, we don't need a technical reset if, if you all need one?
Oh, you're good? Oh, I thought, oh, okay, I was told that. No, never mind, we're, I guess. As you were then, I apologize. Or, and, any, all right, the information has changed. Uh, anyone, okay. Before I close the public testimony, anyone else wanting to speak? All right, uh, all right, you three, please come down, down front and, uh, and then we'll, uh, state your name, we'll go from there.
Hi, I'm Joyce Spencer. Um, I have lived over there for thirty-plus years. My kids went to Zerger. I worked at Zerger. So I little know a little bit more about the building and the reason why it was closed. And it wasn't just low enrollment, but that was a big part of it. Some of it had to do with, the building needed to be upgraded and it needed fixing. And those things cannot happen with the way the building was built now. Would I like it to stay as a park? Yes. My granddaughters go over there with me now. I would love for it to still be a park. I know the ship has sailed, the school is selling it. It is not going to become a school. It's been closed for twelve years. That's not going to happen. It needs to become something other than an empty building sitting on a lot. I like the idea of keeping the walkway on the east side. I think that's very important. Would I like it to be reduced from houses of forty down to say twenty-five, thirty? Yes. I'd like it to be smaller, I'd like the lots to be bigger. That would make me a whole lot healthier than what's going in. Because I know no matter what, there's going to be more traffic. There's going to be more pull on our electrical system, water system, fire department and everything else. It just cannot be that. I mean, it's going to happen no matter what, by this happening. And I think we need to be very thoughtful on how we do this. I know that it cannot become Sheridan Greens because I know that was a whole different thing where the land was leased by the school. So it automatically reverted back to you guys. It was not something that was purchased by Jefferson County Schools. So there's a difference. I also know that there was other charter schools that looked into moving in there and there's a reason that they chose not to go there. So it still has to become something, but it's not going to be another school. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi there, my name is Jim Tyler. I live over on Ninety-second Place, so probably about halfway between Zerger and Woodrow Wilson. So I'm not as directly connected to some of the previous speakers. Um, and while I'm not initially for the recommendation to, uh, have Cardell build, I'm not against eventual reuse of that land. I think, uh, the city council should consider a couple of things as we go through this process rather than simply dotting the i's and crossing the t's related to your memorandum and the six points or seven. Uh, first of all, the, as we've heard a couple times, the expected price at the time of selling of the completed homes is going to be somewhere around eight hundred thousand dollars. Maybe it's less, maybe it's more. Um, as of twenty-twenty-three, the average price around Denver was six hundred and forty-nine thousand. And the average, uh, income during that same period of time was only ninety-six thousand, ninety-eight thousand within Westminster. And in order to be able to purchase a six hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, you need to have around an income of a hundred and sixty thousand to two hundred and fifteen thousand. So unless you have a dual-income household, it's unlikely that your average citizen or family is going to be able to purchase this home. You're going to have to have or, uh, bring in people who have higher income. And while some people would consider that a good thing, I don't necessarily believe that is true. Um, one of the things that we, my wife and I have been very, um, privileged was that ours true. Um, one of the things that we, my wife and I have been very, um, privileged was that our son had special needs and we were, because I was a single earner, she was able to take that child, my, my son, to various, um, schools, uh, including up, uh, um, at Wit, uh, at, is it, uh, the academy that's over on Sims, um, in order to be able to get those special needs met. And also in Arvato, even though we lived in Westminster at the time. So I'm special. Parents who have two incomes, who have to work, we, we don't have a consistent busing within the Jefferson County School District now around some of these schools. Uh, and therefore, you know, opportunities for those students are limited as well. Uh, so, and I don't bring this up because I think we should just make Zerger a school again. I understand that, um, those logistics are probably unable to be met at this time, but I think that more time and more forward planning should be used with regards to how we're zoning. Um, in addition to that, we didn't talk about the size of these homes. It sounds like, um, we're looking at about eight thousand square feet for a plot, um, based on average of forty units in these eight acres. That's not a huge amount, but if you look at the map, and, and that's the, the other map that actually showed the streets, it doesn't look like there's a lot of street parking. So, uh, I, I haven't been able to find the statistic for the number of cars in Colorado for a single-family home, but I can guarantee you that within King's Mill, it's more than two, right? So unless the particular floor plan is one that includes two-car garages, you're going to have additional parking issues as well, and, and that really has been brought up. So I, I would like you to all to consider these things. I would also like to put on the table that that walkway, if this, um, motion moves forward, that that walkway between Ninety-first and the High Line Canal be a requirement to stay in place. And all that would require is essentially about, uh, eight-foot additional easement, right? To move left. Um, so those are just the points I wanted to make. Um, I hope you consider that really in the, moving forward. So I, again, I can't say that I disagree with saying no right now, but I don't think that that means, you know, Cardell's out of the, the running for the future. I think they have to come and address all these points that have been made by everybody. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else wish to speak? If so, come on down and, and we will take your testimony.
My name is Ken Meyer. I really like what number, uh, speaker number one had to say about the playing area. Uh, the picture I see, there's nowhere to play, fly a kite. I see that happening. I see the kids out there playing soccer and football and all these other, I don't see that available. What are we going to do with these kids that need to get their energy out? If you build all these homes? I'm not against building a few homes maybe, but don't take away the football field or the soccer field or that walkway that, that previous person talked about. If Cartel doesn't like to have only twenty houses, goodbye, forget it. Let's cut the house. Let's cut the house numbers down from forty to no more than thirty so that there, I, my home would not fit on one of those forty-by-one-hundred lots. What kind of a home are they going to build? Mine is the smallest home in the area. Does anybody here have a perfect home that they're, I saw some pictures up here. I don't see them fitting on the house without be, the houses are only two feet apart. That's no way to build homes. I, my home, I see most of them have ten feet between the houses. Is that what they are going to have here? If not, they may not, I don't want them here. I want land for the build a home on and have some exercise out there mowing my lawn. I, I like the idea about a cartel Westminster Park. I think that was a great idea. Because you're not going to take away our play area. I, I use that walkway all the time between, uh, where they are? I can't find it. Oh, between the homes at eighty-seven fifty and eighty-seven eighty West Ninetieth, and then it continues up the hill to the south. I use that all the time to go up to the High Line Canal walkway. I used to ride my bicycle through that way. Are you going to take that away from me? The idea with having to go through a residential area to get to the High Line Canal? I don't like that idea. I don't know about anybody else. I think every one of you over there should come over there and rent a home and see what we have. I don't know where you guys live. But if it's not near work, if it's not near this development, I don't think you have a right to say anything about it. And but except listen to those who are here, living here. I think it's part of your duty to live in the whole area that you are having redeveloped so that you get a taste of what is now in existence. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Mike Lloyd. I live at Ninetieth and Dudley. Listening to everything tonight, it occurs to me that what's developing here is that we're going to have a little tiny space of million, almost million-dollar homes and set in the mid, in the midst of our community, which will be, I mean, it does not blend in with the community. Will the new owners, the, will they establish a homeowners association to protect the value of their investments? Will they really actually allow the rest of the community access through their property to get to the park and all that? So that's, that's one of my concern, I think, that you should think about. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, no problem. Take your time.
Hi, my name is Sharon Cade, and I've lived in my house for forty-seven years and I have seen so much change. We have two kids that live on either side of us, and believe me, I love them to death, but their yards look like crap because they don't take care of them, sorry. They don't take care of them. So these smaller houses are probably ideal for these people. Not that I want them there, and I don't think you should have that many, but the smaller yards, because these kids just don't take care of their yards. And if you go in our neighborhood now, I'm sorry, it is not a beautiful neighborhood anymore, all the way around. You said last time at the meeting that Westminster takes care of all that easement and all the garbage and the trees. They don't. We've had to call on it four or five times. The weeds are over a foot tall. And they come into our yards. Not that the kids on either side care, but I care because I take care of my yard. So I don't care if these houses are close because these kids don't want to take care of their yards. They want a big enough backyard to put their dogs in and just sit out front. But I just don't think we should have that many. But I also think that we need to start taking care of Westminster. You go up and down these neighborhoods, nobody can afford the water. Nobody takes care of their yard anymore. Everything's wild and you try to talk to them, oh, I have my rights, which they do. But you look in the neighborhoods anymore and they're not beautiful anymore. These people say that these kids won't have any place to play. Our kids didn't have any place to play. They played in the street. We played in the street. Didn't hurt us. You know, we have kids riding around on electric little bikes all the time, you know? So they don't have a yard to play in. Playing the street, we all did. We played kick the can. We played hide and go seek. We rode our bikes. We were outside. Right now, I have three great-grandkids living with me right now. What do you think they're doing? That's all they do. I can't get them to go outside. So these houses, the size to me is fine. I don't want them two and three stories. I'm sure we can't do anything about that. The yards are no big deal. I just don't want a ton of them. I don't want the traffic in the area. You know, our kids, when they closed Zurgur, we had to go to Weber and we had to go to Lucas. Okay, big deal. People take their kids, drive their kids everywhere. They don't walk to school anymore, not like we used to. We had to walk to school in the snow, you know? You heard that your whole life. You know, these kids can't walk across the street. It's not a big deal what type, size yard they have. If you made less houses in this area, they would have a bigger yard to play in the backyard. Kids are different nowadays. They don't play outside. They play inside. But that's all I wanted to say. I just don't think there should be that many houses. And, you know, if, if these people don't take care of the houses anymore than the people in our neighborhood do anymore, it's a shame because like I said, when I moved into that neighborhood, I loved it. I don't like it anymore. And I've lived there forty-seven years. And like I said, I love the kids on either side of us. I think they're great kids. But they have no idea what a lawn mower, what a weed whacker is, what anything is. Their yards are nothing but weeds, and I'm the one who has to take care of them because I will not let my lawn go. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Amanda McPherson, and I live on Dudley Street. Sorry, I'm very nervous all of a sudden. And I'm one of the eight people who would, whose home's back to the open space park school right now. And looking at the map is very concerning to me because I would suddenly have three new neighbors backing up against my back fence that I don't have right now. Also, looking at the size of these plots is very disturbing to me. As you can see from the map, the, the size, forty by a hundred, four thousand square feet, when all the homes in the neighborhood are what, seven, eight, nine thousand square feet or more even in some cases? I'm very concerned about the size of these homes. As another person mentioned, you can't pick up a home off of this map and stick it in one of those lots. So all I can think is, these are going to be tall. And that disturbs me a lot because I looked out my back window today into the park and saw a soccer team out there in uniform practicing. I've looked out and seen families having baseball games. There's all kinds of things happening in that park all day long. Sometimes, I'll be honest, as someone who backs to a park, it can be a bit much with the noise and the activity. But I wouldn't trade it for the world. I think taking away this green space, a place for people to have soccer games and baseball games. There are other parks, but they don't have that kind of space. They just don't. This is a very unique park in this neighborhood. Oakhurst cannot replace this. The park over on, I think it's Field, I don't know. Anyway, that little park there can't replace it. This is a unique space, and taking this away from the community to build, I don't even know what, what you're envisioning for these homes. But to take away that space to build all these homes, so many of them, in such tiny lots, it really concerns me. It concerns me a lot. Not just for me and my family, but for our community where kids play. It's not just kids, though. And yes, kids do play outside. I hear them, day and night. But yeah, I'm really concerned about what that's going to do to our community to lose that green space, so much of it, and then pack in so many, probably very tall homes in that area. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
You don't even have to start the timer, don't worry. My name is Justin Vilski. I am actually a school principal of the not-public school located directly south on Field Street. I would just, I thought I would never get this opportunity, but here I am. I would like to publicly apologize to anyone who lives in this area. I am that soccer coach who yells out. And so I'm very sorry I have a loud voice. This would take away our free soccer field that we use. Granted, we'll live and, you know, we'll be okay, but it was more of a community apology, so I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, my name's Quinn Narison. I've, I've watched you outside of my back door because I back up right next to the park. I'm on nine zero six five Estes Street. And in this new plan, there's going to be, I think, five houses, four or five houses that are going to back up to my house, which is quite a lot, five houses to one house. So I, I don't really understand how this development fits within the plan of the community. I don't think it makes sense. I also bought my house in 2022, so I'm a fairly new resident to this community. But I've been diligently trying to save money to, you know, eventually move into a larger house. We, my family and I, we just had a new baby. He's thirteen months old. And I, I use that back gate all the time to access this park. But we've been trying to save up money to, you know, move into a larger house. And I'm really concerned because I'm not going to be able to sell this house that I'm currently living in. You know, because there's going to be construction for, you know, the next three or four years. And so if I can't take out that equity that I've already put in, I can't, you know, use that towards a new home. So that's really concerning for me. Yeah, just wanted to make that note to the commission that this plan directly impacts me in a very large way.
Thank you. Would anyone else who has not testified on this, please come up?
My name is Helen Contreras, and I live in the neighborhood also. And I've been listening to a lot of these people, and I also oppose the building of the homes here. On one of the slides that he mentioned, the slideshow number eight, he said the resources were not going to increase with the water or the sewage on there. But when I look at the pictures, it indicates that there's going to be trees that's going to be planted on each one of the homes, in front of the homes. Where's that water going to come from? Water, the tree. Also, the, one of the other issues that was going to, that he mentioned was the parking. I think they said that there was going to be parking on the side streets. So that's going to take away our parking on our own street in front of our own home. And it sounds like, it doesn't seem like they're going to have any kind of underground parking, any kind of parking for their own occupants if they do sell these homes at this ridiculous price that they're saying is going to be affordable housing for these persons that are going to be coming into the area. It is a quiet area. It is a quiet neighborhood. It is mostly, it is occupied by kids and a lot by older adults as well, myself included. But I do include this into my unit that I also enjoy the park. I also enjoy the walkway. We like to walk around the High Line Canal as well. And it is getting to be a little quiet, and sometimes it is noisy. It is occupied a lot by some of the bikers that go through. But the times that we do enjoy it, when the new occupants are going to be coming in with the new building, what do you think that's going to happen? It's just going to be overwhelming to a lot of us that'll be there. What I don't like about this, with the new homes coming in, it is going to impact our waterways. It is going to impact our parking. It is going to impact our quietness, and it is going to impact our neighborhood just being Westminster. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? Going once, going twice? All right. All right, I hereby close the public testimony and will allow staff and the applicant some time to respond.
Vice Chair, could, could we have about five minutes to collect our thoughts? I think there's a lot of comments made from the audience.
Yeah, yeah, let's take, let's, let's take, let's take five minutes. Everybody, have a bio break, and we'll be back here, if I can see my time, at nine oh seven.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
For comments on the utilities, I did want to state at this point that identifying opportunities for replacing aging infrastructure is something that is identified by our comprehensive plan and by our sustainability plan. And this is a viable way to get private development to pay for something that would be a city cost, that will be a responsible and more resilient way to go about paying for infrastructure replacement as they're needed. Next, I would wanted to speak to real quick about some comments on sprawl. So with any sort of new development that goes in, in kind of more greenfield areas, if you will, it also triggers other things like increased roads and increased sidewalks, increased utilities needing to go in, as well as also the need for increased businesses, increased facilities such as schools, hospitals, fire stations, what have you. The sprawl element is really more addressed here in the fact that it's going in into an area where, yes, it's going to put strain on existing infrastructure facilities, but not to a level that it's going to require brand-new services that would be at a much more of an impact when you go into more sprawling areas. Last thing, a difference between this site and another school site that was brought up, with the other school, there was a reverter clause that was built into that development that required that school to come back to the city. I think that it is important to note that that requirement did push the city to have to pay for the demolition, the rebatements, the environmental analysis. And city resources are currently a bit strapped for providing opportunities for our parks as is. So having a new park in the area could create a little bit more concern on the city budget. I think that's all I had to speak to, unless there was anybody else from staff, but otherwise I'll turn it over to the applicant.
Thanks, Carson. I want to go back and touch upon the RFP process that the school district went through. I think this occurred about two to three years ago. There was public outreach, there was a public board that helped the school district make this decision. They've reviewed all the applications at the RFQ process. And this also opened up other uses, other developers to use different uses. I'll touch back on what I said previously. There were three finalists in the RFP process. They were all residential. You know, the city had the opportunity to turn it into a park or a library or any other use that they see fit. But it was a public process, and so, you know, we're here because, you know, Jefferson County thought we were the best option for them. And then another question about the status of the school. We were told by two high-level Jefferson County School District members or employees that the school is in such disrepair that it wouldn't be worth going back in there and rehabbing the school. It would just cost way too much money. There is asbestos in there. We'll remove that asbestos as per the state regulations of how to get rid of asbestos. So it would be contained in bags and hauled off the site. And then I think we're going to follow up with a couple other.
Thank you. I just wanted to take a moment and make some clarifying comments about the existing Kings Mill Park. So the existing Kings Mill Park site will not be touched. It won't be encroached upon. There will be no impacts from this development on the existing Kings Mill Park. We will provide an additional land dedication to expand the size of the existing Kings Mill Park by that one and a half acres. The five-foot trail currently running east-west from the cul-de-sac to Kings Mill, and I'm going to flip the, is shown here, and that will remain in place. So that east-west access that is currently in place will remain. We are providing multiple connections north-south through the site in addition to the street network. The, one thing I do want to point out is the existing path from the east-west connection to the cul-de-sac, south to where it meets Farmers Highline Canal, is not actually a trail. It's a five-foot-wide drainage ditch. It is concrete, so I'm sure people do use it as a walking surface. I'm sure for a lot of folks that's really great, but that isn't the technical intent of that concrete. So we would be providing a public sidewalk that was ADA accessible, meeting public standards on the street between the east-west connection and the existing Kings Mill Park. One of the comments we heard tonight was, well, how do we make sure that we're still allowed access there as neighboring residents? Again, this would be a public park with public street connections, so the development would have no ability to prevent surrounding community members from using those facilities. A couple of things I wanted to speak to specifically on the physical home sites and the physical homes themselves. This site plan proposes a 40-by-100-foot lot, so approximately a 4,000-square-foot lot size. The houses will be two-story houses with approximately 2,200 square feet each. We will provide, we're looking to provide a two-car garage with two parking spaces in the driveway. So while, yes, there may be on-street parking for some, we are providing up to four off-street parking spaces per home. We will meet the setback standards from the city, which I believe are five-foot side setbacks, which would provide 10 feet total between homes. And we will be putting an HOA in place which will maintain the, whatever it determined is the umbrella that the HOA needs to take care of. And we heard a comment about fire, and so all of these homes will be sprinklered because it's part of the Westminster Code, is my understanding. So I think that that's, I'm going to let Travis talk to about some of the utilities.
Thank you. I think the other thing I want to touch base on is we heard a lot of comments about utilities and impacts to the sanitary sewer and water networks. As part of this application process, we did prepare a utility memo, and we compared the water and sewer demands from the school to what the water and sewer demands would be for this residential development. Sewer demands went down, water demands went up primarily due to irrigation. We presented that to city staff and the engineering department, and they had no concerns about the ability of the infrastructure to handle the changes in those demands. As part of the next step in this process, we will be doing further analysis, some flow monitoring on the sanitary system, water model, to ensure that, you know, any of the changes we make do not negatively impact any of the existing infrastructure.
Apologies, everyone, now so quickly. There are a couple items I forgot on the second page. Wanted to clarify real quick how the density is calculated with the comprehensive plan analysis. So we take a look at the overall acreage. In this case, that is the 0.08 that was originally relayed to us. And I believe that as we get the actual land area hashed out with the ODP and PDP, that the specifics of that acreage might change, but it is that total over the amount of homes that are in the area. So the up to 5.0 dwelling units per acre is what they're requesting, and that does match the surrounding density for the character areas and the residential low-density character area requirement. And lastly, just a clarification that when it comes to the school deciding to remain open or switch to another user, that is not something that is within the city's purview to be able to regulate. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that rebuttal. Does the commission have any additional questions for the applicant or staff at this time? Commissioner Peg?
I do have one clarifying question. I think it would be an applicant question regarding sidewalks. And I appreciate, I think you already tried to answer this question, but so what I heard, but not in these exact words, was that there will be a sidewalk on Everett Street from the PLD area up to 91st Avenue. Is that area up to 91st Avenue? Is that? So these green lines are those sidewalks?
So I want to touch base, what you're seeing here is the local street section that shows a five-foot sidewalk on each side of the road. That's what we're proposing for all the streets within the community.
Okay, that answers my question. Thank you.
Great. Commissioner Collin?
Gosh, so many great comments. I just want to say that I appreciate you guys all coming out tonight and making a lot of comments. You don't usually see this many people so passionate about their community. So I wanted to actually clarify a few things that I didn't think were answered, and I think they're pretty obvious answers. But someone asked about snow removal. City will do snow removal on streets, right? So I think that was one of the questions that came up. Gosh, there's just so much. You know, the school's out there for, oh, yes, Mr. Klein, would you like to answer that?
Yes. So Heath Klein, Assistant City Engineer, Develop Mobility and Stormwater. So to answer the question, since these will be public rights-of-way and roads, they're classified as local, so it meets the standard for removal when we have in excess of eight inches of snow. But the snow removal would be done by the city on the roads.
So it's similar to the rest of the community?
Correct.
Thank you. Perfect. Thank you for clarifying. You know, that school's out there for 10 or 12 years empty. And I would think that the school would have had something they could do with it. They would have. I would have loved to see them do something with it, because this community, it feels like that's kind of the heart of this community. So I understand you're passionate about it. It's really hard because they own the property. And if I heard some of the comments from the applicant at the beginning, they talked about $150 million. Is that the number you gave? $150 million that the school district pays to take care of old schools that are vacant?
It's roughly $150,000 per school.
Oh, $150,000, per school?
Per year.
Per year?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. Sorry.
It's okay. That's a lot of money. And they've been doing it for 10, 10, 12?
12 years.
12 years? That's a long time.
And they still have 14 others that they're taking care of.
Sure. And we all would like to have smaller classrooms with more attention for the students. All of these things just don't add up. Something's got to give. They've got to get rid of the school. They've got to sell the property, and they've got to use that money to help the district. And I kind of see that. I understand that. I would love for the school to become a library, but you guys have a great Stanley Lake Library really close. I'd love for it to be a community center. We've got awesome community centers in Westminster. And, you know, if you look at this community on an aerial map, I would encourage you guys to do that when you get home. This neighborhood has so many benefits. You've got the Niover Creek Trail, you've got the Highland Hills or Highland Canal Trail, you've got, I mean, you'll still have Kings Mill Park. It may not be as big, but it'll still be a park. You've got Somerset Park, Dover Park, and you've got Stanley Lake.
Sorry, just to make the point of correction, Kings Mill Park will expand, not be reduced in size.
Okay, thank you for correcting me on that. So, and again, so there's a lot of stuff going on here. I understand your passion. going on here. I, I, I understand your passion and your concern. I, I just, I'm struggling with this one because, um, one, one of the things I want to clarify, too, is it's nice to have affordable homes, but if you want the lot sizes to be the same size as your lot sizes, these homes are gonna go way up in price. So either you have a smaller lot or you have to have a, a, a larger lot, or else go with a multifamily or a higher density to get affordable. It's just the math just doesn't work. And so a developer comes along and they have to do this construction. They've gotta work through those numbers, and they have to work for them. I would love it if they donated land. I would love it if the developer said, hey, we'll just donate all this. They're not gonna do that. They're in the business to make money. They've got shareholders and employees they have to pay for, insurance, all that kind of stuff. I guess I'm not really asking questions. I'm just, this is a tough one, 'cause I, I...
I don't know what to say. It's all I got. Thanks.
Commissioner Tomacek.
This is for the city. Has there been any indication that the city was interested in this property during its, during the twelve years of vacancy?
Thank you for the question. No, there has not been. That has not been built into any of like the budget analysis for this area being considered for a city acquisition.
Well, I'm gonna take an opportunity to ask a few questions here. So let me get my stuff in order. I think we answered that one. I, what I'd really like to know, and maybe we can go back to the slide that has the, the new site plan. I'm just curious. Yeah, thank you. Yep, you were, you were there a second ago. There, there. Stop. Thank you. Alexa, stop. Anyhow, the, the... Yeah, I'm sure she did. Anyhow, I was trying, I'm trying to figure out, based on this overlay, I know we're, I know Kings Mill Park proper is, is not shrinking, and it'll actually expand to some degree from what is legally that. That said, it seems like the boundary between Kings Mill Park and the rest of the lawn of Zurgar Elementary is fairly nebulous on the ground. You can, I don't know that you can really tell this is city park versus there. So can you, can you estimate how much of that lawn area south of the parking lots that they're talking about will be converted from what is a quasi-public use right now to private property?
So the, the total acreage of the site is roughly eight acres.
Correct.
We're gonna dedicate an acre and a, roughly an acre and a half to the parkland. So, but that's, six and a half acres would be the development. And then within that six and a half acres, there'll be right-away streets. And then we will, I don't know what the actual acreage is.
I see your engineer is doing math.
Well, I'm gonna try to convey this. I have an aerial of the park up. So, right now, the, the green, we're, we're just talking about the green field, not the parking lots and the playgrounds.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, so the, the cursor, so it's just south of Ninety-Place here. It comes in, and it kind of comes probably across, maybe a little bit further set, like right through here, is kind of where that green space is. So I would say, you know, it's hard to estimate. Maybe we're preserving sixty percent of it.
Okay.
Um, I would also like to point out, we are preserving, you know, all the trees also on the north side. That, that was something that came from our comments with the community.
That's the trees that are, that are on, on the lot or the trees that are along Fields/91st?
They're on the school property.
Okay.
Yeah. So there's some mature stand of trees, kind of, and that's what you can see if you look on this plan, these kind of bubbles here. Those would be the tree stands that we were planting.
Got it. Okay. Great. And as, as far as lot sizes go, I know we're, that's probably a little too much in the weeds for this, but it, I don't know. Are the lot sizes proposed truly that much smaller than the adjoining ones? I've heard, I've heard lots of different numbers as far as what the lot sizes are. Can, and do we, do you know roughly they're, they're roughly the same size, they're ten percent smaller, they're ten percent bigger?
I'm going to not answer your question specifically because I don't have an actual number to give you. I, I do want to mention that because of the way that the existing neighborhood borders the site specifically along cul-de-sac, so I'm gonna point out this east side specifically along cul-de-sac.
Right.
Because you are going around a curve, more often than not, you end up with a wedge shape. So definitely hear the neighbors saying, well, all of a sudden, I'm gonna have three houses behind me, and that's absolutely accurate. But the truth of it is, is if the lot was a regularly shaped rectangle, that distinction of having one to two, or one to three, or one to one, would be slightly different. I realize that the reality of it is, is they have a wedge and we do not, so they have that three-to-one visual. So I do believe that the existing lots are larger. I don't know off the top of my head what that range is.
Okay.
Just spot checking a few around it. I, I'm finding some are five thousand to like seventy-five hundred square foot lots.
Existing?
Existing.
Yeah. And, and that kind of rhymes up. I, I don't live in this neighborhood, but my house is, looks very similar to many of, of these houses, and I'm about sixty-eight. So yeah, a hundred square, for the lot, I mean. So that's, that, that, that kind of tracks. So we're really not shrinking those too much. There is a talk of, I don't know where this eight-hundred-thousand-dollar number came from. Is that something you all were throwing out, or is that something that is just out in the community?
I think at the neighborhood meeting, we quoted a, a price. I don't think it was eight-hundred-thousand dollars. I think we, it's really gonna be what the market dictates at the time. You know, hopefully, construction costs come down, right? They've, they've been pretty high for a long period of time. We're seeing some relief there. And, and again, we're, we're not, we're not breaking ground for another twelve months, so hopefully we see, see some more decrease in those construction costs. I think it was a, a number that we said in our neighborhood meeting, probably six months ago.
Okay. Yeah. And just clarifying, I, I know it's a design guideline, so this may be for you or for staff, but it's two, I believe you're allowed one or two-story buildings in the low, residential low-density. That's, and that's what you're planning?
Uh, yes, sir. We're gonna offer ranch-style and two-story homes. And I think our max height limit for the code, or the code's higher, but I think our max height is roughly twenty-eight feet, which is below the allowed height.
Yeah, so, so roughly what the, what a two-story, no, or split level would be over in the expanse of the neighborhood? Okay. I hear a lot of comments about that sidewalk along the east side of the property that's currently there in its use, north-south. You know, one, the staff has recommended that we approve this with a condition that we're holding certain sidewalk connections to the, to the Highland Canal, to the cul-de-sac, to the east. Would, would preserving that north-south, a, a north-south corridor along that east property line of be something you would be willing to consider as a, as an additional exception or not?
And, uh, excuse, I just want to clarify, like, I know exactly what north-south, I think.
Uh, yeah.
What we referenced.
Yeah, it, right along the east side, you know, if you, yeah, if you go back to the existing map, uh, go to the, yeah, maybe, do we have a better aerial than that somewhere?
As we're flipping, I just want to make a couple comments on a high-level planning, planning methodology. Oftentimes, we try to intentionally avoid putting in narrow corridors where lots back-to-back, because what you end up with is you end up with a five or six or eight-foot corridor with six-foot privacy fences on each side. There's no visibility. Often, there's no lighting. There's a perception of safety question that comes into play. So while we recognize that there is a strong desire, both from us and for the community, to preserve that north-south axis from a high-level planning standpoint, putting that connection in the front of the houses on the street on an ADA-accessible sidewalk is a, a better end condition than having a narrow sidewalk in a non-visible, non-lit location.
Go ahead.
And, yeah, I read, and just confirmed with Carson, the condition, the way I read it was that we would keep a walkway accessible through our community from the north to the south to the Highland Canal. And, and I don't, it didn't say specifically we had to keep that eastern walkway, which I think is a drainage.
Right. But it's not, it's not used as drainage from the testimony we heard, and it's, and from reading the letters of some of the residents, they have lower chain-link fences. Some of them don't have necessarily the privacy fence, and they, and, and many of the residents testify that they even have back doors from their gates to that. So it is kind of a traveled way, is what I'm saying. So...
I, I think it's definitely something we can look into. I, I, I would have to defer to like the actual drainage study that we will do to see if that is needed, but...
Yeah.
Just to clarify the conditional approval. So we would be looking at a preservation of that pedestrian connection from the north all the way through to the south. The specific location, though, would be something that would be reviewed at the PDP and the ODP. So we don't have enough information at this time to really determine exactly where it would go. But echoing kind of off of some of what the applicant was saying, having that trail corridor effect is not something that's quite as so desirable right now. It has problems with the actual activation of the sites, the, the visibility, crime, et cetera.
Okay. Yep. While, while I'm looking, Mr. Commissioner Peg.
Sure. So if there were a sidewalk connecting Everett Street to Ninety-first Street along that path, would, would staff agree to that as, oh my gosh, satisfying the recommended, the recommended public access connection?
Yes, keeping in action would be. We just have to look at the specifics with the submittals that are, come with the PDP and ODP.
Could you... Without a PDP, it's hard to elaborate on that, and it's hard for me to picture all the ways this could be interpreted. Could you, could you elaborate on what some of the things you'd consider are?
So the replacement of what is currently being used as a walkway, that is the, the drainage ditch, that would be one such way that a public access could be maintained. If we were looking at doing something like that, that would mean that we'd have to be looking at still upgrading it to make it meet ADA requirements, and so that it actually functions as a sidewalk. The other option would be to require that, that there is that sidewalk that cuts to the community, and that it is very clearly a public access that would cut through to the trail. The specifics on how that would look legally could, could be differently, but most likely it would be with a public access easement, which would require that that, the entirety of the public streets are, remain open to the public, and they can't be closed off privately.
Sorry, my understanding was that, that these would be public streets. They're certainly publicly maintained, right?
Correct. So I, I'm confirming that. So if they're, if it's a public street, then that would need the requirement, and that would be one of the ways that we would be verifying that this stays as a north-south pedestrian connection point.
Okay. I think I understand.
Is there any other comments or questions from the commission, Commissioner Mayo?
Um, first, just a comment that it's refreshing that the developer's not trying to put two-hundred apartments on this little lot, and so that's kind of the good news. On this sidewalk, I mean, it, it seems to me that it makes more sense for that connection to come down Everett Street. You got, you're gonna have five-foot sidewalks on both sides of that street. It's gonna go from Ninety-first all the way down to the park. I mean, that's, that, that would make more sense than having a sidewalk in the back of all of those backyards. It's kind of a, a tunnel between two rows of fences for twenty houses. I mean, that, to me, that doesn't even make sense. We have something similar where I, and we've got a lake, and people love to walk around the lake, but people's yards back up to the lake, so you can't walk through people's backyards. We walked down Sixty-eighth Avenue on one side of the lake, and we walked down Seventieth Avenue on the other side of the lake. They're both nice, improved sidewalks. That kind of gets you out of, around the lake without trying to go through people's backyards. The comment came up earlier about the number of people behind the house on a pile lot, on a cul-de-sac. I live on a cul-de-sac, and I have that pile lot, and I have four people behind me, plus the two beside me. So I got a single-family lot that I have six neighbors. You know, so I, I get it. But, I mean, it, it works. A couple comments that I heard kind of were conflicting, is I've heard multiple comments that people are concerned that doing this is gonna lower the property values. Other people were concerned that it was gonna increase the property values. You know, so I guess that's just a matter of opinion. I'm not sure anybody knows one way or the other which way it's gonna go. But it just, it's just odd that there's that disparity, that people are strong that it's gonna lower property values, and people are strong that it's gonna increase property values, and they don't want their property values increased. We heard the comment earlier that they want to keep it open space. Obviously, it's not open space. It's private property that the school owns. Kind of lucky all this time that the school didn't fence it to keep neighbors out. We live next to Westminster High School, and if our kids went over there on a weekend to play soccer, did get arrested for trespassing. So, you know, it's a good thing that you've had that opportunity. I guess that's, that's all I have.
Commissioner Peg?
So I'm in partial agreement with city staff about this, uh, 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 oh my gosh, words right now. And...
The additional condition?
Yes, the additional condition. And I, I think I'd like to refine the language, and I think I'd like to consult with the city attorney. Can I, can I motion? I'm, I'm going to motion for an executive session here. I move to go into an executive session for the purpose of receiving legal advice on the question of exactly how to word this addition. the question of exactly how to word this additional condition recommended by staff. And I'm, I mean...
Okay. Yep. So we have a motion for executive session. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. We need a roll call vote here, and five of seven commissioners must vote yes for a executive session. So Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Peg?
Yes.
Commissioner Kinnear?
Yes.
Commissioner Zhang?
Yes.
Vice Chair Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayo?
Yes.
Commissioner Colling?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomacek?
Yes.
All right. The motion has passed unanimously. We will be in an executive session and...
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can I actually poll each of the Planning Commission members and ask them to state on the record that they will keep the contents of the executive session confidential after we enter the executive session? I'd like to start with Commissioner Peg.
Yes.
And can we go down the line?
Kinnear, yes.
For Zhang, yes.
Carpenter, yes.
Mayo, yes.
Colling, yes.
Tomacek, yes.
Thank you.
All right. We'll be back.
To say to everyone who showed up, I do appreciate your comments. I actually read the entire packet with the new emails. I heard comments earlier before we got started that, well, they don't read those anyway. We do, or at least I do, and I know others that I've spoken with do. And the fact of the matter is, right now, from 30,000 feet as a planning commission, the city doesn't have control over that parcel, doesn't own it, has not been able to or been interested in purchasing it for the last 12 years. Planning Commission can't force that. We don't control the purse strings. So, the big picture is, the school district made a decision to go down this path with this particular developer. Our question that we're tasked with is, is the proposal that they've put before us, does it satisfy the provisions of our municipal code? And after review with the various departments of the city and the planning staff, the staff has determined that it does. After listening to the staff and the applicant's plan, it appears to me that it does. That doesn't mean that your concerns aren't legitimate and valid, and in fact, you will have an opportunity to raise many of those concerns again at the appropriate time. It's probably premature right now. There will be an ODP and PDP process that the applicants will have to go for. A lot of the concerns that were expressed are legitimate concerns to bring up then. But when the school districts make a decision that it's going to sell the property, it's no longer going to be a school with a schoolyard, it's not open space, it's not a park, it's going to be something. This is the path they chose, so then when the applicant comes to us and says, here's what we want, I assume they have a condition in their agreement with the, I hope, with the school district, that if this doesn't work, the deal's off, and then maybe another investment group or someone else can come in and make an offer for it. But this is the set of cards we're dealt and that we're faced with right now. And I think, in my mind, there's no question that coming to us with the proposal that they did pursuant to the code that we have to review and the work that the dedicated staff has done convinces me that they qualify for approval at this stage of just the comprehensive plan amendment with the condition. And again, I don't want to understate the importance of the public comments, we don't ignore them, but we have to review what's before us, and many of the concerns that we heard are really addressed to the school district. So that's my comment.
Thank you. Commissioner Tomacek.
I'd like to expand upon what Commissioner Kinnear put forward. There were several alternate proposed uses for the site. Some of those should be directed to the school district, some should be directed to city council. I have a piece of property that's quite a bit smaller than this, but right adjacent to my house, been open space for the 30-odd years I've lived in Westminster. And when it came up for development, a lot of the same arguments were made for that property are being made tonight. The city council listened in some respects. So, I do encourage everybody to return for the other portions of the development process and to talk to your city council members. They are amenable to listening to what the citizens have to say.
I'll just say I agree with Commissioner Kinnear and Commissioner Tomacek on this, for sure. It's, you know, this is just the first step, and it's just the comprehensive land use. Nothing on that site plan is set in stone, or it's still set in jelly at this point. Yeah, I, you know, I think the applicants heard a lot of good comments, and they're probably going to, you know, when this gets to city council, they'll probably have a discussion with them as well and come back with some modifications, and we'll see what, and then when the PDP and ODP come to us at that point. I did just want to, and thank you, by the way, both for the public to coming out and for the applicant for answering all these questions, because I think it was very helpful and illustrative there. I did want to address one thing. One of the public commenters today asked us if we had campaign donations from developers. I just want to state for the record that the planning commission is not an elected body, we are an appointed body, we are appointed by our city councilors. And we, not only do we not take donations from developers, we get donations from nobody, and we get no fee, no pay for this, other than maybe a dinner before our meeting and a soda or a pop. That's pretty much what we get paid. So, there's no donations here, we're not, we are just here reviewing the land use, and it seems like we are changing the land use to be exactly what is next door to it, on three sides, really four sides, once you jump over the park. So, I'm in support. And is there any other comment? If not, I call the question. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Peg.
Yes.
Commissioner Kinnear.
Yes.
Commissioner Zhang.
Yes.
Commissioner Mayo.
Yes.
Vice Chair Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Colling.
Yes.
Commissioner Tomacek.
Yes.
The motion passes on a seven to zero vote. Thank you, thank you, everybody, for that, and we will take, and do we still need a, okay, we're going to take a short break to set up the next presentation and let the next applicant get ready, and then we will come back and complete the hearing. So, thank you, everybody. Okay, thank you for your patience, everybody. We will now move to our next public hearing. We'll open the public hearing for item 3B, Public Hearing in Consideration of an Appeal for an Official Development Plan Amendment for Sheridan Park, filing number 6A, block 3, lot 3. And before staff begins their presentation, we need to disclose on the record that at least a few commissioners were contacted by the applicant in this matter, and any commissioner who was contacted by the applicant, please raise your hand, and I'll call you on you individually so you can make your disclosure on the record. We'll start with Commissioner Peg.
Sure, let's see here. Good, good. Okay. So, the applicant for the item on public hearing tonight contacted me and wanted to discuss their application. The applicant did not reach me directly, but reached my dad. My dad, not knowing the rules about this, texted me saying that someone was trying to reach me about this. And I then informed my dad that folks with business before the planning commission are not supposed to discuss their business outside of the hearing with me. And so, despite the ex parte contact from the applicant, I can and will remain impartial, and I will base my decision tonight solely on the evidence and testimony presented in this hearing.
Thank you, Commissioner Peg. Commissioner Kinnear.
Yeah, so the applicant for the item on public hearing tonight attempted to contact me and spoke with the conference administrator in my office at work, and left a voicemail, I did not call them back. And despite the ex parte contact from the applicant, I can and will remain impartial, and I will base my decision tonight solely on the evidence and testimony presented at this meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Kinnear.
Good.
All right. Commissioner Mayo.
The applicant called me, I answered the phone, but allowed the applicant to speak, but when they finished, we did not discuss the application. We wished each other a good day, and ended the call. Despite this ex parte contact from the applicant, I can and will remain impartial, and will base my decision tonight solely on the evidence and testimony presented at this hearing.
Thank you, Commissioner Mayo. Rather, you had your hand raised before I, are you guys good? All right, all right, all right.
I will say that I was contacted by somebody. I didn't catch their name, and I said I was busy, and they said, okay. So, I don't know if this counts for ex parte communication. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, thank you, everybody, for your disclosures. All right. So, Mr. Harlow, please begin your presentation.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Trevor Harlow, senior planner with the city's planning division. As part of bringing this project before you, a staff agenda memo has been created, and tonight's public hearing has been properly noticed. The agenda memo, its associated attachments, tonight's PowerPoint presentation, the public notice published in Westminster window, the mailed notices, and the posted notices are hereby entered into the public record at this time. The notices of the public hearing were mailed to 425 property owners and tenants within 1,000 feet of the site under consideration tonight. Two public notification signs, one being in English and one being in Spanish, so two total, were posted on the subject property. The city has also posted the hearing date and time on its website. The project site is in the Sheridan Business Park, directly east of the intersection of Yates Drive and Wolf Court, as pictured here, also just south from City Hall. You can see the Public Safety Center right here. The applicant is requesting to have an official development plan amendment, or ODPA, approved to allow them to erect a wooden fence placed interior to the property line. The applicant is not proposing any development of the site currently with this application. Fencing of a vacant parcel is typically not an allowed practice unless in conjunction with a full development plan. But the city offered a compromise in this instance to address the applicant's issues. The city agreed to allow a perimeter fence, if it was a commercial-grade metal fence, that would fit the character of the non-residential office environment in the area. It is important to note that this allowance does not permit the current agricultural use of the property, which is not allowable without a PDP amendment. The neighborhood office land use designation, of which this property is located, sets a standard for commercial office park development that would routinely see commercial-grade metal fences utilized when placing perimeter fencing where fences are proposed. Additionally, city standards typically require fence placement along the property line when acting has a perimeter fence for commercial development, such as one that we'd see in The applicant has provided this site plan exhibit with their ODPA. The site plan shows the proposed fence location, right here, the two doors, a gate, and the outside storage box, right here. Section 11515 of the Westminster Municipal Code contains 17 criteria that are to be considered when reviewing official development plan amendments. Some of the more prominent criteria include that the ODP conforms with the preliminary development plan, all city codes, ordinances, and policies. ODP exhibits sound planning, with any exceptions being warranted. ODP is compatible with the surrounding area and future development, and ODP site design conforms with city code and is compatible with the character of the area. Staff finds that the ODPA does not meet eight of these 17 criteria. The criteria they do not meet and the reasonings why are highlighted on the next slides and were outlined in greater detail within the agenda memo. Criteria 1 is not met since this plan does not conform to city codes and policies, both for the material of the fence and its configuration. Additionally, has mentioned fencing of a commercial property is not typically allowed unless the fence design and location are approved in conjunction with an ODP for a full site development plan. Further, the applicant's intended use of the property, while not included in the ODP amendment, is not a permitted use, that being an agricultural-type use. Criteria 2 is not met since this plan does not conform to the existing PDP. The existing PDP designates only office land uses for the area this parcel is within and lays out clear design guidelines for buildings to be developed. The PDP does not provide explicit guidelines for fence placement and material type, but the Westminster Municipal Code and the land use character type provides guidance for the office land use, which predominantly features commercial-grade metal fencing. Criteria 3 is not met since this plan does not exhibit sound or efficient design due to the placement and design of the fence interior to the property on otherwise vacant land. Has a compromise, has mentioned previously, the city was willing to approve the fencing of an undeveloped property, but will require it to be done in a manner that reflects the character of the surrounding area and exhibits proper placement to ensure it blends with the surrounding uses. Even if the lot is fenced, the use of the lot is still limited to commercial office development, not other uses, such as agriculture in this case. Criteria 4 is not met since this plan has no special amenities or innovative design that warrants exceptions. Additionally, the fencing of a vacant lot, while being considered on this lot to provide a path forward to the property owner, is typically not allowed. An exception can be granted in this case, but the type of fence and placement anywhere but the perimeter of the parcel are exceptions without any virtue for special considerations to established code requirements and design guidelines. Criteria 5 is not met since this plan is not compatible or harmonious to the existing area, due to the reasons stated before on the type and the placement of the fence. Criteria 6 is not met, given that this addition is not compatible with the surrounding area. The proposed plan does not provide for the protection of either the surrounding areas or the development from potentially adverse influences. The proposal may result in a negative visual impact to surrounding developed properties, and these properties were developed, of course, in accordance with city codes, standards, and guidelines, and represent significant investment on those properties by their owners. It is critical that the city apply the same regulatory standards to this vacant lot as we impose on all the adjacent properties. The addition of an interior-placed fence that is not compatible with this character in this area does present some degree of adverse influence by reducing the likelihood and ability for this property to develop in a manner that fits the character of that Criteria 9 is not met since this plan does not exhibit sound design principles, again notable from the placement and type of fencing in this proposal. And lastly of these criterias, criteria 10 is not met since this plan presents a design that is not compatible with the surrounding area. Once again, I want to emphasize the contrast between this proposed wooden fence and the commercial environment of the surrounding area. Perimeter fences in general are not used in this office park, and the existing wooden fence is all used in a limited degree, primarily as screening for trash, equipment, and patios. More photos are included in attachment 3 that you More photos are included in Attachment 3 that you all provided with, but you can see this fence location map here showing the limited uses of wooden fencing in the office park, so subject property here, and then a couple of quick excerpts showing where there is some fencing, all of it being wooden. Aside from down here, we do have the closest you would see to perimeter fencing being largely gated, and that is more of a commercial metal-type, type structure and not wooden. And then, lastly, just to note, criteria seven, eight, and 11 through 17 have been met by this applicant. Staff recommends that the planning commission hold a public hearing and deny the requested appeal and official development plan amendment. The applicant is with us tonight and has a presentation to share with you as well. Thank you for your attention. There are several staff members with us this evening. We'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. For now, I turn it over to the applicant for his presentation.
Hi there, everybody. Charles Margolis, C J Margolis.
Excuse me, can you walk up and speak into the mic if you don't mind?
Actually, I'm still socially distancing with all of the extra germs. I'm not going to be breathing in on that microphone. I'll probably speak loudly and forthwith on the microphone if you would like me to. One thing I would like to point out is nowhere have I ever mentioned that I want to use the property for agriculture at all. That is a lie. I called the county. The county said that a vacant lot could have a fence. They said you have to call the city planning. I called city planning. The next day, I called again, and finally was transferred through to a planner. I explained that this lot was completely covered in 50 years or more of trash, and also in dog excrement, human excrement, toilet paper, undergarments. Just yesterday, when I checked the sign, I picked up a 40-year-old soup can. There were needles. The neighbor had told me that she was concerned about vagrancy, and I have had my lawn equipment box broken into six times with the locks cut. The entrance to the business park has discriminatory graffiti, and it does concern me because having had my $1,000 of lawn equipment stolen, a lawnmower, two-wheel barrels, like 12 bags of dirt, everything from this little lawn equipment box, I spent three months cleaning this property up. It was so terrible, just layers and layers and layers of mostly dog excrement over every square foot of the property. I rented a hotel room next door to the property for three months to clean the property up. And I wanted to do that for, to clean up the neighborhood, is what I told Mr. Musso, who's the, works in the assessor's office when he had written me. Now, I would like to quickly explain, I did this property buy as a simultaneous swap. Right after that planner told me she did not see a problem with a fence there, Jennifer Baden. And when I inputted this all into artificial intelligence, artificial intelligence told me that is a bait-and-switch scam, like Google search, artificial intelligence now, whereas in the past, it used to be you type in Google, it gives you the results. Now you know if you've seen Google and other ones, it gives you a little, we're thinking, and now typing out a paragraph. It's, when I inputted my experience into artificial intelligence search, artificial intelligence search said, it's a bait-and-switch scam. I called, the planner told me she did not see a problem with the fence there. And then I was dragged on for over eight months by Dave Gurman and John McConnell. They wouldn't answer basic questions. The fence two doors up is 4.5-foot horizontal wood, not on the perimeter of the property. I pulled up on Zillow a couple vacant lots. The only two that I pulled up, I included those in the letter that I added to this. They both have fences. I didn't pull up a third, fourth, fifth vacant lot. I just pulled up Zillow, I toggled to vacant lots. The first two I pulled up, the one has a big wood fence on it. The other one is in an otherwise completed, completed business area, and it's a four-sided fence, and right next to it, there's another little four-sided fence. I'd like a four-sided fence here because I want to protect the core of the property from getting covered in dog excrement. My family built a small hospital, I used to live and work there. We then built a cancer research institute, and I funded $200 million worth of cancer research, and I read the research. Unfortunately, the gain-of-function virus's main binding receptor is found in all cells, but mostly in the small intestines of both humans and animals, so the feces, as the Westminster City Code points out, is a health hazard. When Dave Gurman got my email, he emailed me back, and he said that dog walking is allowed anywhere. But then I pulled up the Westminster City Code, and it specifically says you're not supposed to have dog excrement littered everywhere. You're not allowed to do that. Even though I spent three months cleaning the property up, over the past week-plus of maintaining the signs, piles of dog excrement. I have the photos, I just haven't emailed them over. I actually did take some photos of it. It's just disgusting. I cleaned up a little bit of it, but was unable to get all of it just recently. And that, it's just a complete lie. I never said that I'm using my vacant lot for agriculture. I mean, there, you know, I, I feel like it goes along with this scam that I perceived, and also some discrimination that I perceived, because this graffiti in the front of the business park says, "Don't be a Jew." I had my lawn equipment stolen, $1,000 plus lawn equipment, locks cut six times, and all my equipment stolen. People be carrying weapons. Now, less than a mile from this property is where that terrible road rage incident happened in 2018, where a mom, her three children, and a bystander were all shot, the 13-year-old son, just tragically, terribly, in a very similar office park to this. I want full-time security on my fence, such as a 3G motion detector camera on each of the doors and the gate, and I feel like that will enhance the security, but the sort of invisible factor is this fact that human excrement and on the property, yes, human excrement, unfortunately from homeless in the area, is what it appears, because like I said, toilet paper, I found, undergarments, and then every square foot, dog excrement. What you have there is the potential for air pollution that can cause severe infections. And unfortunately, this other side fact that I've tried to explain, and you may have picked up on it, the demand to have metal only, I sent pictures over to the council. The metal fences in the area nearby where I live, because I live less than two miles up the road from the vacant lot, they're all rusted over, not holding up as well as the wood fences do. There's no other wrought iron metal, metal fences. In the park that I have seen, there is the horizontal wood fence two doors up. I have one like that across from where I live, less than two miles up the road, and I just think it looks really nice, and it secures my neighbor's yard really well. And the side fact that a lot of people will never have heard of is metal becomes a secondary source of radiation. You may have heard that before, but radiation increases this thing no one's ever heard of. I've never heard of it, and I read a lot of medical research every year. My family's charity donates around $5, $7 million plus to fight cancer every year, a motto of eliminate cancer as a cause of suffering and death. My grandma died at a funeral on my fourth birthday, and my family sold half of our hospital and built a big not-for-profit charity with a motto of eliminate cancer as a cause of suffering and death. Well, I read and absorb a lot of the medical research, even, even though I'm not a doctor, a scientist, I come from a family of people who fund medical research, and what I've read is that radiation increases furin expression, and furin is what makes COVID so bad, according to a lot of research. I, I've never heard of furin, a lot of people never have. It's very, very important. If the furin system gets disabled, people can get blood cancers, they can get some severe conditions. And so a metal requirement means that that material can become a secondary source of radiation and can increase furin expression, which that might not be so terrible. There's metal all around us, you know? But a field, a lot like mine, that was covered in dog excrement and excrement, and then even though I cleaned it up, it's still getting piles of it, has that residue all over it still. So it's not a good idea to mix something where the main binding receptor is in the small intestines and is littered with that dog excrement, next to something that increases furin expression, such as metal. I just think the wood looks nicer. I think it would, I, I strongly disagree with, you know, this multitude of points, them saying they don't think the design is right. I went to the Rhode Island School of Design. It's a very competitive school to get into. I spent several, a couple months and several weeks working on the design for the fence. I think it blends in, and it improves the air quality, improves the public health. And I was very, very surprised to see that that city planning office, John McConnell and Dave Gurman in particular, disregarded my basic questions about the fence for over eight months. It started with John, more in January to May, but started with Dave Gurman in late September, and then brought John in, so I don't want to, like, falsely say that, you know, it's eight, eight more months for both of them. But I had brought this to the attention of Dave Gurman, and never once did he or anyone in planning ever reply, one time, about any of the health factors. In fact, the reply was, "Dog walking is allowed anywhere." Well, there's like bile and all this other gross stuff that goes along with that, that it harms my health being there tending to the property. This whole thing with, I mean, the miscommunication and trying to convince the plant commission that somehow I'm trying to use the lot for agriculture, I, I don't understand where that's coming from, other than the fact that my one design, just the term I use for this lot, on the perimeter of my lot is garden. I just mean I want to make it nicer, not grow agriculture stuff, but I use that term, and it's getting falsely translated into, I want agriculture. This is a vacant lot. I would like to hold on to it, but like, if I ever, you know, get to the point where I have the resources to develop it further, then I do have a future plan for that. But for now, like, it's just so gross. I mean, it's a health hazard. It is a health hazard, and explaining that to John McConnell and Dave Gurman for over eight months, and then, like I said with John, it was like more like five and a half months, and it was like eight more months with Dave, just to clarify that. I, I mean, I, I just have a strongly worded comment that I posted. I, I will continue fighting for my fence, and any city employee who appears to be favoring for-profit scams over health considerations, I, I would be calling for anyone who's working for Westminster, who favors for-profit scams over public health, to be fired. And so I don't want anybody to take that like that's a real smart thing, but I am calling for John McConnell and Dave Gurman to be fired. If you hear there's a public health hazard, and you drag that thing on for over eight months, then, I mean, that is a, a sign that that office does not care at all about anybody's health. And I have also said, and I think is important to point out, I did further research on it. I think that it's a little worsened with the particular type of pollution that we have here. The plutonium pollution can cause things like memory disorders. You were struggling to find the word satisfactory. You said that I left a message like a voicemail, but what it sounded like, I didn't leave a voicemail for you. And I'm not trying to say that I think that plutonium pollution is like causative of all that, but the fact that John McConnell wrote up the secondary denial and said that my fence was solely to secure landscaping equipment, when never once did I say that. There is a three-and-a-half-foot-by-four-foot lawn equipment box that's had $1,000 worth of stuff stolen out of it. The fence is not to secure the little landscaping, land, lawn equipment box, you see? And that secondary denial that I nailed with 440 neighbors caused one neighbor to come up to me and say, "She doesn't want storage." I then went and looked at the letter I had mailed to the 440 neighbors, and I saw that it said that my fence was to secure landscaping equipment, when for over eight months, I explained my fence is to secure and safety that property and prevent it from being a health hazard. So that, you know, you, you get it with these, you know, this, can you switch to the next slide? Let me just quickly, because I'm so sorry, I feel like I've gone on a little long with that. Sorry. I, you see on this slide, I have my vacant lot and see the term garden. I just mean nicer, you know, like, you know, lawn covering. I don't mean like we're growing vegetables. No, no, no. I use that term because where, you know, where I'm from, you use that term, it means like, yeah, it's going to look a little nicer. There's no like growing vegetables or food or anything like that. I will also explain that I originally did call to say I'm interested in the potential of marijuana business or medical marijuana business. I'm not in a place where I'm like snapping my fingers and making that happen, but I wouldn't mind gearing this property up for something like that, or medical technology, something else. I explained to the council that whether it's permitted to do a marijuana business or not, I would still be interested in this property because there's all sorts of other good permitted uses. So I'm not sure somehow that gets in there with this whole agricultural use thing, but, you know, I, I'm not growing anything in this lot, and it is just completely false what Trevor was made to say. And the fact that John McConnell wrote that denial and gave the false impression that my fence is to secure landscaping equipment makes me think that he has a lot of work to do, and potentially there is some sort of plutonium pollution-type, you know, effect that is there, causing a condition such as like a memory disorder, early onset dementia is what I said and looked up and specifically found, that there is an overlap with plutonium pollution. And so this whole thing, for over eight months, I explained the property's covered in dog excrement, it, it's disgusting, and for the secondary denial letter to say, "This is offense to secure landscaping equipment." It's just flat-out wrong. It, it's mean and horrible what I have gone through for over eight months, when I would have expected if the planning had heard there's a health hazard, there would have been some professionalism, especially after when I called, a planner told me she did not see a problem with a fence there. I made the simultaneous swap for this property after Jennifer, Jennifer Baden said that, only to then have what, when I put it into AI, you know, the result says, "That sounds like a bait-and-switch scam." I was told she didn't see a problem with fence there. That does not mean that it's guaranteed. I knew I would have to apply, but then it was a mean and horrible circus routine that they put me through. So quickly, I, because I can tell, but just less than a minute, could you please get to the slide that shows the red and pink map? And by the way, I do apologize, Mr. Gurman and Mr. McConnell, because you know what my thoughts are, but I do want to clarify, it is only because I am sensing that a for-profit scam is being prioritized over public health, because the fence is not to secure landscaping equipment, and you know that. The fence is to improve public health. And make it so that I don't get sick and the neighbors don't get sick. Get to the one with the plutonium pollution map. And then, lastly, the screenshot. You, you've seen that, it's fine. The, the red and pink.
What is it? All right.
Are you not finding it?
This one?
No. Go back to the first slide, Trevor. Okay, you, you have put the wrong slideshow up.
This is what I was.
No, I sent you the second slideshow and explained I've never done slideshow before. And you put the wrong slideshow up. It's okay, the, the picture that I, he, he has a surprise. I don't know how I sabotaged your fence that we are running a big scam on. That's exactly what he's doing, Mr. Carpenter. I sent a second PowerPoint slide, and you don't have it on, which is fine, but let me just cite the two things that are not on this original one. The one is just an interview with a Rocky Flats neighbor, and she says that her neighbor had a baby born missing parts of its brain. So my concerns about the radiation pollution in our area, I think are well-founded, and I'm very disappointed in what I- And um, I'm very disappointed in what I just saw from the council, from the commission, excuse me, um, with uh the fact that like forty plus neighbors gave their concerns. And then there was this little theatrical situation where you were like, I wanna talk to this lawyer. And then you came back and then you were like, we approved it against all of your comments. That seems to me like going along with this, we favor for-profit over public health. Um, and so I think that the people of Westminster, obviously, and like most common says people, hopefully, many of you uh, you know, would recognize the public health, the medical intelligence stuff is obviously more important than anything we could do to prevent the severe health hazard. So lastly, let me just wrap up with saying that the fact that Westminster's doing all this big digging right now, the fifty foot um uh hills of dirt being dug for new homes, that means that pretty much probably all of you are interacting with those sites and those construction workers. And it's just a known fact that the plutonium pollution settles in the soil. Um, so please, uh, uh, and lastly, let me say that I was not told about Exparte. They were supposed to tell me according to what I then Googled. Google says that if you're entering into some, you know, hearing that has those rules, you're supposed to be informed of that. I actually called planning, asked to leave a message for Bossert's office. They had me speak to somebody in engineering who had never heard Bossert for, for near, oh, like six weeks, even though I had called to leave a message for Bossert and called Peg Kinnear's office, did not leave any sort of voicemail. I'm sorry about that confusion. I did speak to your assistant, very nice lady, uh, you know, and I, I had a very wonderful conversation, Mr. Mayo. I appreciate your time and I, and I realize, you know, um, you know, we didn't get a chance to, to speak at all, but they were, they are supposed to let us know about Exparte and they did not. And from what I have read, that is grounds to reverse the denial. And then lastly, by the way, I know I said it two or three times, there are four easements on the property. What I read is the fence is not supposed to enclose the easements. What they sent me encloses the US Postal Box on the corner. It can't do that. And then also last, last, last is there are trees planted over the sewer easement. I want the fence the way it is to give space from the sewer easement with the improperly planted trees and the core of the property. Um, and so, you know, thank you all very much. I did see a lot of professionalism. I know how Mr. Peg might take that. That is exactly what I saw. It was unacceptable. Forty plus neighbors explained their time and you did a little, you know, antique thing after, I can't remember the word satisfactory. I mean, I talked to my lawyer, I screw all of you all. That's what you did, Mr. Peg. And I don't appreciate, I don't think the people of Westminster do. And I think you should be a little more professional.
All right. I, speaking of being professional, please uh, let's, let's stick to your property and not talk about previous cases or.
I wrote the letter and by the way, I'm not trying to be overly harsh, but I will. I'm just gonna tell you what I've seen and observed and that is what I observed. And it was pretty unusual what I saw there. Uh, and you know, I, I side more with those forty plus neighbors who don't want their children born with severe birth defects. Uh, you know, so thank you all. Appreciate your time and have a nice day.
All right. Well then, uh, any, any questions from the commission at this point? Oh, what's that? Oh, yeah. Well, yes, let's uh, thank you. Uh, ch-ch-ch-ch. All right. Well, all right. So I hereby open the public testimony. Uh, Madam Secretary, do we have any voicemails or emails?
No voicemails. All the emails were included with the packet that went out this afternoon.
Okay. Did anyone uh sign up to speak?
There are names on the, the signup sheet, but I think it was for item three A. I did check with the uh, person in the back and she has declined to speak.
When you went to fence, all right, for Sheridan business here's, oh, okay. All right.
Great. Awesome. All right. So from that standpoint, I will, I'll close the public testimony portion, portion and ask if. All right. Well, so do we have any questions for staff or for? Or I would kinda, I guess I'm gonna ask a question. Um, I, I mean, I would uh, I guess I would probably address that to Mr. McConnell, uh, just uh, there's some accusations made there. Can you just kinda give a rundown of what happened? Kind of if that, if that, uh, cause it sounds like, did, did we just not get back with him or what, or how did, or how did this happen?
So we, we do have populated, uh, staff has put together a timeline of communications with the applicant. Uh, we're happy to share that with you either verbally or in writing. Uh, Mr. German does have a timeline of our communication.
Yeah, if you don't mind doing it just verbal, just so, just for the public record since.
I'll ask Dave to approach.
Hey, Mr. German, please.
Provide the communication with you if that's helpful.
No, thank you. Just uh.
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to just read the timeline?
Yeah, just, yeah, and yeah, Cliff's notes is fine, but.
Um, I, I will shorten this, but we can add detail as you request. Uh, I believe our initial uh contact with Mr. Margolis was in uh September of last year, uh, September twenty sixth. His initial contact was with um our building permit supervisor, Nita Carrasco. Uh, she, after listening to his interests, uh, believed that his uh call was better addressed for planning staff. Um, on the same day, he did uh make contact therefore with uh Ms. Baden. Um, on the following day, September twenty seventh, I spoke with him at length. I provided him with the um subdivision plat, the PDP of record, the ODP of record. Um, and I advised him that any development of the property would have to be compliant with both the EDP and ODP of record or an amended version thereof and also with the comprehensive plan. At that time, it was my understanding from uh visuals that he had shared and, and emails that he had sent that uh, the uses that were of interest were gardening, storage, warehousing, with long-term plans being undefined medical technology. Um, I, I responded to that by telling him that I, I believe that this might be an ill-advised um property to obtain simply because it didn't match uh, the, the allowed uses did not match what he was talking about. Um, I did not hear from him again, um, but I, I did discover that uh October eleventh, uh, he had made purchase of the property of the same year, like twenty twenty four.
Last year?
Last year, yes. On uh December thirtieth, um, the planning, well, uh, excuse me, the building division received a fence permit application to put a fence on the property. Um, the applicant was Bigfoot Fence Company, the permit number BLBG twenty four dash fifty six seventy three. Um, we debated uh the situation, did the research and on January eighth, twenty twenty five, we review, we uh denied the fence permit on the grounds that it needed to be preceded by an approved ODP amendment. Um, on February tenth, uh, myself and John McConnell met with the applicant on a virtual Microsoft Teams meeting. Um, we at length agreed, uh, even though it was um not usual practice that we would allow the placement of a fence on the property and a, and a tool storage box. Um, but that we would need an approved ODP amendment prior to that installation. And um, you know, at that time, uh, John made the point that um, you know, the, the, what we'd be seeking would be a, a commercial grade uh metal fence suitable for the um, the office park environment. Um, Mr. Margolis did also state during the meeting that he was more partial toward a wooden fence. Um, excuse me, but we, uh, we did uh conclude that meeting with the understanding that uh an ODP amendment would be forthcoming. On February twenty fourth, uh, which would have been fourteen days later, we did receive an ODP amendment um, application from Mr. Margolis. Um, we found that the document was insufficient for processing. Uh, we, I worked with him at length um to create a, uh, an alternative um ODP amendment um, that would meet all of our formatting requirements. I presented that back to Mr. Margolis on May nineteenth of twenty twenty five. Um, he uh, there are some things he liked about it, some things he didn't. Um, we discussed and eventually it was denied. Um, he, he didn't, he didn't want to have the perimeter fences as he mentioned. Uh, he did not want to have the metal fence as he mentioned. Um, and so he said, well, I, I don't wanna change anything. I don't, I don't wanna accept this. And so um, we had to deny ultimately his initial ODP uh application. Uh, and that was done on June eighteenth. And then the final uh part of the process was uh, you know, Mr. Margolis came forward and said, yes, okay, I would like to appeal the decision. Uh, he's since then worked with um Mr. Harlow, um, Mr. uh Kazev and Mr. McConnell. Um, with me helping uh as much as I could along the way um to bring him forward to this meeting tonight.
Okay. Thank you for that. Um, I guess another question. Um, I mean, I kinda know that office park a little bit. There's, aren't those buildings out there wood? Uh, cause my uh, I, I had had a friend who you, well, I think he's passed now, but he used to have an office there. And I just remember those being wood all around there and uh, and everything. Why? My, I guess that's, I guess my question is where? Uh, why is wood forbidden, but uh, but steel is what, what we want?
Uh, that would uh probably come from um, uh, the reading of our commercial, retail commercial design guidelines. Uh, John, if you have any more to add on that?
Yes, that's correct. Uh, it's not typical to have fences at all in commercial or non-residential developments. If you look around town, you don't see too many.
Right.
Uh, we have occasionally permitted them or entitled them through the ODP process. Uh, that's in conjunction with a full development entitlement, not on a vacant lot. We understood Mr. Margolis' concerns about the dog excrement and the trash and the security. And so it was our understanding that he would like to secure the property as a whole. Um, when we discussed the interior fence, that didn't seem to align in our opinion uh with his concerns and we thought it'd be better to do a, you know, a traditional commercial grade fence around the uh exterior of the property line to secure the entire property and keep trash and dog excrement away. Um, if you look around this particular office development and everyone has a different character. Uh, this one was probably built during in the nineteen seventies. It's, it's, it's pretty dated. There are some wood screening elements around uh trash enclosures, um, utilities. Uh, our current design standards would not allow wood to be used to screen dumpsters, to screen utilities. We require masonry, uh, we require um, you know, materials that match the, the building. Um, I, Trevor could probably speak to uh his analysis in a little more detail of the building construction, uh, which may vary from building to building, but I would encourage him to advise you of that.
Okay, great. Mr. Harlow?
Yeah, for sure. So uh, one thing I just wanted to point back to is that locational map I was sharing uh earlier. I know it's very hard to see anything there. Um, but this was included with some more, uh, you know, larger photos and I think attachment three. Uh, so I'd advise you to look at that if you wanna see those more closely, but you can see throughout there has uh, as John was, was mentioning, all that wood is largely done for screening. Um, the only other exceptions are patios, uh, but also in pretty minor states and not used and not used for security, not used for uh perimeter fencing, nothing of that, that degree. The only site that has a, what would be a newer fence and be for security is to the south. I don't wanna set the cursor off again.
Yeah, which is south there.
Yeah, to the south. And once again, apologize, like you can't really see that, but you should be able to see it in your attachment.
Yeah, I've got it open.
Yeah, so you can see, yeah, that's not a wooden fence. That is more, more closer in line with a commercial type fence. And that's really the only instance of a fencing in that that's more in line with what this proposal is, which still not quite being the same, but yeah, everything else throughout there, there is some wood that complements uh some of the buildings, but they're only on patios, there's screening, there are things of that nature.
What about the fence that's adjacent, that's Shaw Heights to the e- east to there, isn't it? Uh, what about the fence there? Isn't that wood that goes along there?
Yes.
That is, that is a common residential rear privacy fence for the homes. That is correct. And the uh, the fence that Trevor mentioned last, that was approved with an ODP amendment for that business, um, I wanna say a couple of years ago. It's been a couple of years. They were having similar security issues as a matter of fact.
Yeah.
I just have one clarification if I can, uh, Mr. Carpenter, whenever, if it's possible to have one clarification.
Uh, I, I'll give you uh, I'll, I'll give you a minute for your rebuttal.
It, it's, it's, well, I mean, I could rebut, but the only thing is, is I don't understand. I, I've never said I want to do warehousing on the property. I, I've never said I want to do agriculture on the property and they put the wrong slideshow up. Had, I spent twelve hours stuffing the four hundred forty mail, uh, envelopes and then I found it's completely wrong. Um, and so I, but the main point of clarification is just for the umpteenth time, I hope you know what I mean. Like it, it's been like, oh, five or six times or something. I've said to Mr. German, I don't know what you're talking about. You keep saying warehousing. I'm not asking for warehousing at all. And he keeps on coming up and saying, there was warehousing and like, then I'm hearing there's agriculture. And then I made it very clear when I resent my PowerPoint that this is the new PowerPoint, never done with PowerPoint, this is it. And they put the wrong one up. So again, like I said, there may be some extra factors involved. I think um, the whole process should be optimized and streamlined. Um, and if you, this thing was covered every square foot, dog excrement, I spent three months cleaning up. And then when I was doing the signs, dog piles everywhere. And just lastly, let me just say, my sign fell. I spent almost two hours putting it back up. It had dog excrement on it. I finally got them both to stay up for the whole of remainder nine days. I was amazed that they stayed up with the wind and everything. However, I got sick for twelve hours after I got there, saw the sign fell and put it back up and noticed it had the dog excrement on it. And I, for approximately twelve hours, when I got back home that day, I was sick and uh, you know, with uh diarrhea, basically, that really gross. I mean, this is a lot, a lot that was completely covered, every square foot, dog excrement. And I just find it very surprising because here, Mr. McConnell just said something about that. He never replied one time to me. And then the other thing, they sent me the map with the perimeter with enclosing the post box, having my fence overlap the pre-existing, having it enclose the easements three times. And every single time I said, what do you mean? It can't enclose like I, you know, some of these things like the post op, uh, post office box. And uh, they never replied at all. And then the only other thing to clarify is the fact that I did a simultaneous swap. That's not their burden. That's my, mine. But I trusted them after, and it was not on the same day. I talked to somebody the day before, then I talked to the next day. I was put through to a planner. She said she did not see a problem with fence there. Um, and keeping it a vacant lot. And like I said, just, and it's a little reminder, hold up two vacant lots. I didn't search through any other ones. They both had fences and that's included on my actual PowerPoint on the QR code that you all are not getting. Because even though I wrote and said, this is the one I need you to use, they didn't use it. Uh, and they've been trying to sabotage my fence project. I, I believe there's some discrimination involved. Um, and I think that the whole thing can be worse than like I said, by plutonium pollution. That if, if you have the people who get something like early onset dementia from plutonium pollution, they're not only gonna be forgetting stuff, they may be lashing out and stuff. Uh, and that's what I experienced. Thank you, Mr. Carpenter.
Mr. Margolis.
Did you have another question?
I, I do for you.
Yeah, Mr. McConnell. Yeah, Mr. McConnell.
Would you help the planning commissioners understand what you do want to do with the property? And also, why fence off a small and smaller interior portion of the lot?
For dog walking on all four sides. And also, since there's those easements, I read you're not supposed to enclose the easements. There's a long easement on the east side and a long easement on the south side. And my fence proposal leaves those accessible. But it's also to allow dog walking and allow it to be a common area. And like I said, I hope you all, if if I don't feel like someone is prioritizing a scam over public health, I will not be calling for that person to have their employment language. And obviously, me saying that doesn't mean it's going to happen. But I I've I've worked extensively with Senator McConnell, as a matter of fact, at his office. My family built one of the oldest continually inhabited towns in Kentucky County, Virginia. And I always get a kick out of calling back to Kentucky. My family built a fort that the bridge called Fort Liberty, Rudolph's fort, and it got taken by the made by the British Army in the year seventeen seventy seventeen eighty, in June of seventeen eighty. So when I I looked up and read Mr. McConnell was in charge of fences, I knew I was being forwarded to Mr. German. I was as nicer, respectful and professional to them as possibly I could be because I wanted this thing. And I do feel that that office is leaning on this, there's more money over here, so we do that thing. And it really should be for the future, for the commission, for the council, for the planning offices. The public health should be the priority. That's what's important. That's what people want. Like I said, my family built a charity. The motto is eliminate cancer that causes suffering death. That is the bigger picture. And and I will just lastly quickly say, I took a picture with my phone of the Zurgar Elementary plutonium chart. And I I didn't get up to speak, even though Gary had asked me. But there's this line underneath that chart where it says, this is the plutonium that we found. This is the plutonium we found. This is the plutonium that we found. But then uncertainty, uncertainty, uncertainty. Obviously, any cop sense person does what does not want any uncertainty about their family having something like birth defects, which can be neurological or cardiac birth defects. We don't want any uncertainty. So the thing is, when you look it up, wood shields from that type of pollution. Metal becomes a secondary source of radiation. So in general, let's look at materials and find like that medium so that owners have the option and, you know, to work with what is healthier. And if they want metal, okay, great. But a lot of people might have reasons like mine. And let I had a two year long COVID vaccine. My hands and ankles were burned for two years. And so I want the fence because it provides a little shade. I want it open so that it's accessible for easements. But also for the dog walking, my family has a ton of dogs. It's totally fine to have dogs. I don't mind picking up outside the fence, but I don't want it inside the fence. It makes it easier for me to keep up the outside of the fence without having to.
Smaller area.
Yeah. So thank you again. You all are doing a good job with, you know, you heard what I said. So I appreciate it. If, you know, you you do the best that you could do, which I see there's a lot of that going on. Yeah, I mean, I like Westminster. I own a million dollars of property in Westminster. I invested in Westminster. I wanted to clean this up especially for the neighbors because it kind of breaks my heart to think of them breathing that, you know, dog excrement pollution, when it's just, it can cause severe infections. And the one neighbor, I spoke to her and her husband, and she's the one who came out and said, I don't want storage. I had said, hey, I'm from Indiana, like you. She she kind of seemed like she didn't recall ever talking to me in the past. And I said, I talked to you and your husband. And she said, you didn't talk to my husband. I said, well, I was talking to you and your husband. You were right there. And she gave me the impression that perhaps her husband, you know, doesn't communicate. And I think that conditions like that can be because they live next door to this terrible health hazard that I think should be, you know, since I bought it, it's it's, you know, it's a standard of of public health that you can't expect everybody to specialize in. But it is an important part of planning and urban design. So I hope you all don't think I'm overly harsh. I don't mean to be. But come on, I was dragged on for over eight months after the planner said she didn't see a problem with the fence there. That didn't mean it was guaranteed, but for to get dragged on for eight months. And if you haven't heard of simultaneous swap, that's what I did. After Ms. Baden said what she said, I approved the simultaneous swap. That's the type of real estate transaction. By the way, I did not do a ten thirty one. They're commonly associated with that. But that Mr. German is right. He did get back to me. We did not speak at length. He sent me the one email. And I was just surprised that he got back to me about me explaining I had dog excrement. And he said, the only thing he said was, dog walking is allowed anywhere. I then went and looked at the Westminster City Code, forwarded that to him that says that dog litter is not allowed. And he never replied to that. Obviously, you all are very busy, but just the whole point of my efforts are just like, you know, I what I just said. You know, it's hard. I know how cities and towns and councils and businesses are. You've got the money, you've got the deals, but in there, do make sure you you try to use your power to, you know, stand up for the public health stuff. We would all appreciate that. And all all that pollution is obviously has nothing to do with you all, but we just haven't had it. I lived next door to the new Freedom Tower at the World Trade Center for two years. My aunt had a condo six blocks up the road. And, you know, pollution there, I worked on the September eleven memorial for ten years. These twin girls in the film school, right one grade underneath me, their mom was on one of the planes. I mean, it just hit my school because I went to Rhode Island School of Design. And the place to get a flight back to California was the Boston Airport. And so I just say, I've seen the big city. I've seen the smaller city where my family's hospital is. And I really like Westminster, but we are getting a lot more of these big digging projects, which does seem to indicate there's some arm wrestling for favor the more money on this side when it should be, let's have prosperous business, let's try to improve prosperity and eliminate homelessness. But also recognize that the one true, like, top priority should be the health stuff because it's invisible, you know? You can't you can't see, you know, that you cannot see the plutonium pollution type of stuff, but it causes some pretty severe reactions that a lot of people are not going to be up to date on. I happen to read a lot of medical research. My family carries medical research. So when I saw those and tried to explain those over, I was a little surprised that that was all disregarded when I would have hoped in the future that if someone says they just bought a property and it's a health hazard condition, there should be some priority on that. And there wasn't on this. So hopefully, for the future, you all consider working that in there because it's it's not not too much to ask. So thank you again. I appreciate you.
All right, Commissioner Mayo.
One comment. I mean, you can fence in an easement. I mean, probably every house in Westminster that has a fence is fenced in an easement. So that you just have to give whoever owns that easement access. After all your, you know, your explanation of how concerned you are with the dog excrement, the human excrement, it's surprising that you would allow it around the out the perimeter of your property. You just don't want it on the inside of your property, which that kind of confuses me.
It was a reply here. It was a reply to the fact that Mr. German's response was that dog walking is allowed anywhere. And then also, I just noticed that makes the neighbors happy to have, you know, dog walking. And I I like dogs also. My my family has many, many dogs and stuff. You know, I don't mind that. I want it to be a nice property. It was not before. And in my opinion, definition of nice includes happy neighbors, happy dogs, you know, and something that's just, you know, nice is what I'm going for, you know, with with my design and with all that. I I want it to be nice. It was not nice. And I was just surprised. I hope the office can be improved. You know, I I have the harsh, like I'm saying, I think the person should be fired. But I do want to emphasize what I had said. It's only because, in my book, the public health needs to be the priority. And if I ever see stuff like that, you know it's common. But I I do want to emphasize that. A lot of people stand for that, of course, you know? The public health should just be the priority, even though it is so complicated. And like, I don't not saying I'm an expert, you know? And I couldn't expect even some Nobel Prize winning scientists to understand the whole of medicine, you know? But there are these complex things you never would have heard of, like metal with radiation increases, furin. But then there's something, the main binding receptor in the small intestines. That won't make sense to a lot of people. But when I see that, put all that together, like, you know, I'm trying.
Yeah, you're repeating yourself. Well, you got it.
We heard all that. And I hear where you're coming from. I'm HOA president of an HOA, obviously. And we have a four acre park where people walk their dogs. And it's very irritating when people don't pick up after their dogs. I like watching dogs get walked. And we have cameras and we have people trying to catch the people that aren't picking up after their dogs. But it still bugs me that you would allow the dog walking on the perimeter of your fence.
One of the first experiences I had was speaking to one of the dog walking neighbors, and they're just so nice, you know? And so I just I wouldn't and they explained how important it was to me because their dog's afraid of traffic. And so, you know, it just it makes sense to me. I I and also, I read that Mr. Bafoscher likes open spaces. And so I was thinking this, I I based my design on all the resources I read. And then, you know, even though that's so, it says maximum availability.
We 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 got it. We got it. I think their compromise of letting you put a fence around the perimeter of your property is a fair one. So that's kind of where I am.
All right, there you go. All right, Commissioner Peg. I'm sorry. Sorry, Commissioner drawing you.
Okay, so in order for us to approve this P D P, let's see. Excuse me. And it's an O D P amendment. The plan is compatible and harmonious with existing public and private development in the surrounding area. And we heard that there is a a shed for storing agricultural equipment. And there is a plan to put a garden with a path through it, right?
No, no, it needs to be kept in vacant lot.
Yeah, so I just want to give a clarity clarity for that because there was some confusion. What you're seeing on your screen right now, this is the site plan from the O D P. This is what's being proposed, this from this presentation that was talked about that you see on the screen now. This is not what we're considering. This is not what's being proposed.
That's how I would consider gearing the property up.
But that's not what we're considering here.
Okay.
I would be happy to mail out new letters also. You wanted to do a new.
Sir, that's.
I need more time to review the standards here. I hope that other folks have more discussion.
Yeah, Commissioner Jean, are you?
Yeah, so this is what Trevor. So I I want to know, I live in the area. And yes, there are a ton of transient individuals who probably walk in your property and such forth. And so I completely get it. And so, like, I feel you and I get that. Also, like, growing up in the area, I mean, I know this is a dedicated industrial park, but there's that. I mean, the area is kind of like dead. I know there's businesses there, but it's kind of dead. And the his the the neighbors, I mean, there's wooden fence to the back. And I know that the city, Trevor, Trevor, you guys have like compromised with them. But is there a path forward where we could where the city could compromise with the applicant on his wooden fence?
Yes, Mr. Margolis is exercising his due process rights to appeal the denial. His path would be your approval of this.
Okay. Has any of the surrounding property members on this this industrial park, like, or obviously, they haven't done the public commenting, but have they reached out to you and expressed any concerns about a wooden fence?
Yeah, so one of our, I I have spoken to a few property owners. Some of them did submit comments. It probably just didn't reference that specifically, and some didn't. But there has been, you know, expressed opposition for activities that outside of the the typical commercial development.
I was told there was two or three anti fence letters, by the way, total. That's I asked Trevor, and that's what he told me. So just to get everybody to make their.
For the record, sir, for the record, sir, we only have one public comment in email, and that's in support of you constructing the fence. I don't see any.
I think the other ones came after your packet, so they're.
But are they in there? The I didn't see them in the addendum. Were they?
You.
I don't think they're in the addendum if they if they do exist. I mean, I'm not.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
No, that was my question.
And there was a word in ten pages.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, maybe they didn't get. All right. So there's that.
I think the staff's looking as well on the other side of the table.
Yeah, I see the applicants wrote an email. That's certainly that.
The packet addendum was two hundred and ten pages. We have it printed here. Can you just give me a minute?
Sure, I I see a.
Page two oh three.
Two oh three.
Actually starts on page two oh two.
That's also from the applicant. Uh, that's correspondence from the applicant. Yeah, that's the applicant. Yeah.
Yeah, neighbor or industrial park partners who exist in buildings.
It's the same there. See in here. This is. Yeah, in the addendum, I'm only at least searching just for the word fence. I only I only see a bunch of correspondence from the applicant to city staff. And then in the original agenda memo, we had the one email in support.
Yeah, and so, as I as I had said, there was three total received. It is more than likely the other two. I know they came very late. I think both actually came today. It might have just not gotten added.
Okay.
But.
If I could clarify, our posted participation guidelines have a twelve noon cutoff time the day of the meeting.
Yes.
So anything received after that twelve noon may not have made it or did not make it into this packet.
Clear. Okay.
Okay, Trevor, this is for you. Would a wooden fence harm the residents in any manner who are on the back end of his lot?
By the back end, I assume you mean to the east, to the.
To the east, yeah.
Yeah, I I mean, that's the that's a residential neighborhood that so it's one, it's residential. And that's not what this lot is for. So it's a little bit different. And also, that that part is within the county. That's not within the city. So it's kind of a little bit different there. But I would say our bigger concerns are, you know, within the business park itself, which is as part of a continuous development within, especially it's, you know, the two properties right next to it.
I just like to add also quickly, I'm sorry. I I have let everybody on Wagner Drive know it's the nine homes that are on the side of our fence with my neighbors, that if they don't want solar lights, I'll take them off. But I've let them know I do want. But I've let them know I do want the fence, but I just would like to explain. I, I want to make the neighbors happy in both the office park and the neighborhood. And I'm happy to have cleaned it up and proved it somewhat, but to prevent it from turning back into that, that's the basic improvement. And lastly, the original paperwork from 1982 specifically says improvements, quote unquote, fences. And so, again, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, thank you. Commissioner Tomacek?
This is actually for the, the city folks. It's, uh, it's pretty common for compromises to be made on materials in existing neighborhoods. Looking at most of the buildings on the west side of Wolf Street, or Wolf Court, rather. Most of them have wood roofs. They have exposed wood elements, wood siding. There's quite a lot of wood in there. Other than the fact that the commercial standards just say metal fence. And we quote unquote would not allow such buildings to be built today. It seems we're applying different, um, different leniencies for residential versus commercial. Am I reading that incorrectly?
We do have different standards for residential versus commercial. And, and that's what we're applying here. Is that what you meant?
It's not that we did, that we've got different requirements. It's that we tend to give more in residential than we do in industrial or commercial. I'm wondering why that is.
That's, it's a good question. It's a completely different character type. A residential neighborhood is a completely different architectural vernacular, completely different use. In this case, our main concern with any use or improvement of this vacant lot, or any other vacant lot in a existing development, is you have other property owners who have invested significantly in their buildings. Their buildings, their site, their landscaping, their maintenance and upkeep. And we want to make sure that we follow the rules and apply the same rules that we apply to those heavily invested properties to any other property. And we don't want any improvement, and that's kind of what zoning and land use regulation does. Is, it's an insurance policy for people who have invested in their property significantly. And so, it's, as tough as these conversations can be and decisions can be, we're required to uphold the standards of the city. And that's why there is this relief mechanism. So if the planning commission disagrees, there's never any hard feelings from the staff. We understand this is your position to take. And if you see it differently, then it's, it's your decision to make.
Thank you.
Commissioner Colling?
So, I have a question. If this is fenced, it has a very different character than the rest of the office development. And if we're concerned, or there's concerns about, you know, people that are homeless or whatnot, I, I don't know what's going on up there. I'm not that familiar with that area right there. I know it's close by, but I'm just not that familiar. If you have a solid fence along that east side, and there's a space between that fence and, and the wooden fence and the neighbors, does that kind of create a space for people to be where you can't see them? And, and it just, it just feels like it's an odd. I'm just not sure what the purpose of the fence is. Is it just a fence for? It doesn't seem like an office park use. I'm just struggling with understanding what the purpose of it is.
Prevent the dog excrement, just to remind you, is one of the big factors.
Well, I guess I'm kind of in that same, but I don't know what this prevents in the future. I mean, it can, I mean, if we're gonna, if it gets developed into something other than a vacant lot, it's still gonna have to, the fences have to go and then something else will get built.
Well, but that's the whole point. I believe that it can be developed inside of the fence. I've, I've planned the fence so that any of the permitted uses could be built inside the fence. And then, just to say, I leave the room for the setback to the fence. The neighboring property has a thinner area and it's gonna have people living back there. I want mine to be secured with a 3G or 5G motion detector.
Understood, understood.
Mister Chairman, we have certain order rules of our commission and we're not being followed. So, the applicant had an opportunity.
I know, I'm sorry, yes.
So we need to control this because we could be here all night, so.
Yeah, no, I'm.
I know you're doing your best, I just, I think we need to.
All right, well, while we need, we, while we, Commissioner, do you have anything else to say? Commissioner Peg?
Okay. My, my question is, we say that fences are generally not, sorry, perimeter fences on commercial development are generally not allowed. And, I see that that is important in my daily life for walking between different things I do. I prefer to walk to the grocery store and I cross through a commercial lot on the way there. And so, the lack of fence there, in my opinion, is a good thing. It's also not covered in dog poop. And, that's what makes this hard for me, is that if we allow this fence, we then allow every commercial property owner to put up a fence, potentially. And that is extremely damaging for pedestrian circulation in particular. And I know that when I have trouble walking somewhere, I then choose to drive somewhere. And that makes traffic worse. And so, I can see reasons for this rule. I am also loathe to deny someone their right to use their property in a way that isn't otherwise like, you know, poisoning their neighbors or something, to use a dramatic case, or even like, you know, if you, there are less dramatic instances of certain land uses imposing external costs. And so, what I would like from staff here is help understanding where we can draw that line. It is important that, as a commission, one thing we do is try to make decisions consistently. Otherwise, it creates a different kind of chaos. Can you help me with that? I understand why that may be difficult, but.
So, I'll make a suggestion, and it's something that we have seen rarely, but occasionally in the past, where an ODP approval is, has a time limit. In other words, the improvement is removed after a certain period of time. To ensure that whatever's improved is temporary. For example, we've done this for temporary medical offices in a trailer. Where a, a, a medical office needs a little extra space for x-rays or whatever they need to do for a temporary period of time. We do an ODP amendment to allow them to position that trailer on the property. We have an expiration date and it's enforced as a zoning regulation. So, I'm not sure if that's what you're asking, or, or what you're thinking in concept. But that's the only thing that comes to mind is a, is an ODP amendment that is temporary and has an end date. Or has to be reviewed at the end date or extended. And that way, you, you might get feedback from the community, from the adjacent property owners during that time period that may cause you to, when you revisit it, to make a different decision or keep the same position.
I am also loathe to inflict more work on staff and this commission. But I.
That's all I have.
Sir, you've had your chance. Just let him, let, let, let's, let's, let's deliberation happen, please.
What do you see happening? I, I don't see a, a temporary allowance of the fence being helpful in three years or whatever, just to throw a number out there. Are we back at this hearing again?
That's generally the way it would work, if it's, you know, not an administrative approval. Again, it would be an expiration and then to extend the amount of time, there would have to be another hearing.
Okay.
To extend that.
Let me, let me come up with another, I, I think I have another question here. The fence is to abate dog poop and possibly people wandering onto the property and misusing it. Is there an objective way to tell when there's no more danger of that occurring?
I don't know that I would have an answer.
That would be so nice if there was an answer for that.
No, no, Commissioner Peg, I, you know, I'll ask Mr. Graham to speak up if he has any sort of legal advice on this. Because I don't want to misstate anything or lead you in the wrong direction in terms of a temporary official development plan amendment.
I would just say, I.
Sir, excuse me. Sir, please.
You don't have to make a gesture.
Sir, 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 please.
You're, I'm here. If I'm not here, I can't explain, so please don't make a gesture at me.
I'm not making a gesture at you. Sir, please, sit down. Sit down, sir, now, please.
That I am okay with temporary.
Okay.
I, the thing is, it would allow the land to filter all of that.
Okay.
And then I would reapply. And I am surprised at the gesture from Mr. Peg. Because I was trying to.
Sir, okay, I, I got it. Sit down, please.
Okay, no, I, I'm gonna go. I'm gonna go.
No, all right. Mr. Graham?
Yes, you can, you can make it a temporary situation. But while you're doing that and while I have a mic, I would encourage the planning commission to keep in mind that you do need to follow the code.
This is what Mr. Peg wanted when he did this.
Sir.
Get out of here, stop. That's what he wanted.
Out.
Yeah.
So this is from page 88, did you find it? The addendum is the person that doesn't want.
Thank you.
To just quickly tie a bow on my comment. You cannot, you cannot recommend or approve something that is not allowed by the code. You can approve, I think a temporary ODP amendment that expires at a certain time might be appropriate. But otherwise, I would just caution you not to try to fashion a remedy that actually violates the code.
I definitely am not trying to violate city law here, you know, there are, oh, what is it, 17 conditions? And, uh, some of it is, some of these I do not agree with staff's finding that the fence is noncompliant. And I, yeah. So, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to work to an answer here. I'm also.
And that is, and that is fair. You can, you can disagree with staff's finding.
We can, yeah, it's, I think it's our job to determine if it meets these criteria. Yeah, and then, and then go from there, so.
The part that, there's 17 of these.
Yeah.
That, I think that's ultimately what's gonna, gonna make this rough.
Well, I'll think about it. Let's, Mr. Kinnear, do you have, Commissioner Kinnear, do you have? You've been had your light on for a while. What do you have to say?
Yeah, a few comments. First, our code is handed to us by city council, so if we have 17 conditions, we have 17 conditions.
Yep.
We deal with that. Second, if the primary concern of the applicant, and we're on the record, is to abate dog excrement and human excrement and trash, and then he wants to build a fence that doesn't accomplish that, but in fact undercuts that by not surrounding the entire property, I will never vote in favor of that, if that's the basis for his fence. Now, is there a way to do this? As a mediator, I'm always looking for ways to do this. And maybe, his, his only concern expressed about the perimeter fence is that A, it's cutting off easements, which is something that can be dealt with. And that metal causes medical problems that he's concerned about. That I don't know anything about. Well, there are other materials that can be used for fencing. Then, this is not a duality. It's, 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 other materials, in fact, some were mentioned in the context of commercial development. I suppose they're concrete or other, other materials. I, I don't know. So, I think that if the proposal of the applicant is to fence a part because he wants to keep dog and human excrement out of a part because it's a health hazard, but doesn't want to fence the whole thing because he wants to be kind to dogs and let them dump their excrement on the other parts of his, that's nonsensical to me. And, and, and self-defeating. So, to, to me, that's a hard no. It's, it's all or nothing. And second, if, if he's concerned about medical issues with metal fencing, we have other materials that can be used for fencing in commercial context. Let's propose that he come back with an idea like that. That, those are my thoughts, so.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Tomacek?
I know it's slick. As much as we've been debating back and forth about the, the size of the fence, what it covers, and so on and so forth, let's not forget that the applicant reduced the size of the fence based on perhaps some misunderstandings of easements where he's allowed to put the fence, so on and so forth. His original plan, it seems, based on the conversation that's been had, was that he did in fact want to do the entire property. So, let's not hold, let's be a little bit kind in our evaluation of why he's at where he's at with the fence size. That said, a wooden fence around a commercial property seems to be an oddity. And, I will point out that it was permitted at one point, or at least I assume it was. There's a auto dealership right near my house that has a wooden fence along the southeast side. Basically runs from Elliott Street down along a park over to Federal. And, to the detriment of the, the applicant, they just had to roust about 20 homeless people living behind that fence in much the same thing he's trying to prevent. So, take that for what it's worth.
Great, thank you. Before I take your comment, Trevor, could you do me a favor? You, in your presentation, you went through the standards that were not met. Could you just give the numbers of the 17 that, that were, or, or by your analysis? So, that, that shows the burden to overcome if, for us to, if, if we were to recommend an overturning of your denial.
Yeah, absolutely. So, criteria one through six, we identified as not being met. And then criteria nine through 10, we also identified not being met.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Peg?
All right. I think, Dave, in a roundabout way, your comment clarified things for me. You said, "Let's be nice," right? Something like that. Those were not your exact words, but those were the vibes. And, he's clearly not experienced dealing with land use. And I think we have a tiny bit of obligation to try and hear him out. And I think we have done that. Ultimately, what this boils down to is, land use law is complicated and the poor guy needs a lawyer to help him through this process. Staff did their best, I think, to explain why this was, why they are recommending denial. And, I, so for example, did you say that it is not compatible and harmonious with number, which is condition number five? I believe you, you said that was, yep. is condition number five, I believe you, you said that was, yep, I don't agree with that, I think a fence is compatible in this specific case, but there's 17 more of these criteria, and the applicant did not overcome them with his presentation, and that's despite all of us trying to be nice, and I, I think he needs an attorney to help him through the process, and I hate to waste more time, um, but my grandpa got into trouble with his county in Arizona over a land use thing, and he talked himself into ever more and more trouble, and then he finally hired a lawyer, and after one hearing, it was done with no fines or penalties of any kind, and that's what this guy needs to do, that's where I'm at, so, may I make a motion?
You certainly may make a motion.
I move that the planning commission deny the appeal for an official development plan amendment for Sheridan Park filing number 6A, block 3, lot 3, this recommendation is based on the finding that the official development plan amendment does not comply with the criteria in section 11 dash 5 dash 15 of the Westminster Municipal Code.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded, are there any other, Commissioner Kinnear? No, no, any other discussion? Discussion, discussion, all right, vote, please.
Commissioner Peg?
Yes.
Commissioner Kinnear?
Yes.
Commissioner Zhang?
No.
Commissioner Mayo?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
No.
Commissioner Colling?
I'm confused between the yeses and no's, I'm slate.
Oh, a vote for a yes vote is a denial, and no vote is not a denial.
Yes. Commissioner Tomacek?
No.
I think the motion passed on a 4-3 vote, if my math works, all right, so, it is denied, does, does the applicant have recourse to city council after this, or are we the final decider?
You are the final decider, but there is a provision for the, for him to appeal this to the city council, we'll immediately advise him of this in writing tomorrow, because there is a short window of time for which he would need to do this.
Wonderful, okay, thank, thank you, and thank you for your patience as we work through that.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, any old business, any miscellaneous business?
I just want to note and thank staff for your diligence and your patience, particularly Trevor, so great job.
Yep, yep, ditto, all right, and with that, I adjourn this meeting of the planning commission at 11:48 PM.